Okay, welcome to our work session on the Code of Ethics that is being proposed by the Village Board of Trustees. We have to do roll call. Our clerk is not with us tonight, so I'll be conducting the roll call. Trustee Biondo?
Here, present.
Trustee Giuliano?
Present.
Trustee Kasse?
Present.
And trustee Laux?
Present.
And Mayor Shephro, present, which gives us a quorum to start our meeting. So, Mr. Leventhal, would you like to lead us in this discussion?
Sure, sure. I think that, as I understand it, the primary, the primary purpose of tonight's meeting is to give you, the board, the opportunity to address any questions that you might have to me and to have a discussion and deliberation on any points that need to be resolved. But if you wish, I can either walk through the proposal again, as I did at the public meeting, or I can address the public comment, comments that have come in since.
Do any of the trustees, would you like, Mr. Leventhal, to go through the proposed code again?
If I do that, that will give you an opportunity to address any questions that you might have about each individual section.
Right.
So, is that a good idea? Okay, okay. So, after the preliminary statement of purpose, there is a definitional section. And I, I strongly believe that good drafting of a local law requires as few definitions as possible, because defined terms are a trap for the unwary. A word should have either its plain English language meaning, so that, or if a definition is required, it should be defined in context. So, I have included only two defined terms. The first is the word interest, and this definition is the same as the definition given to that term by the general municipal law. And the other is relative. The reason relative is a defined term is because that's where this board can exercise its discretion in deciding how widely to throw the net or how narrowly. There, in the, in, in the area of estates and trusts, they talk about degrees of sanguinity. You may have remember that movie, Six Degrees of Separation. It's the same concept. You can really go very far out in defining the term relative or keep it narrower. We have defined it as a spouse, a registered domestic partner, child, stepchild, dependent, parent, stepparent, sibling, or stepsibling of a village officer or employee. We've not, for example, included grandparent, which we certainly could do if you would prefer that that be done.
Yeah, I had made the note, like, grandparent, grandchild, even fiancee. I was just trying to brainstorm other.
Well, you see, grandparent, grandchild, that, that's fine. Let me just tell you why I would perhaps advise against fiancee. Sometimes people wish to include the term member of household in the definition of relative, but that is contrary to logic and contrary to the English, English meaning of those terms. So, I would rather see, in the text, when you want to include members of household, say relative or member of household. So, since fiancee is not a relative, if you want to include fiancee, then we should consider adding that where appropriate in the text of the code. That's, you know, you, of course, are the legislator, and it's your judgment that controls, but that would be my suggestion.
Is it subject to interpretation at any, at any, in any case?
What's that?
Whether or not fiancee is, is, would that be something that you would submit to your ethics, the board, to consider?
Well, I think fiancee has a generally understood meaning, to be someone who is betrothed to be married, although I once knew someone who would, who would introduce his girlfriend as his future ex-wife. But...
Right.
That, that sort of confuses matters a little bit, right?
Should we include that in the code?
So, let me take it a step ahead. If it's fiancee, eventually the person will be married to the person in question.
Right.
And the code would prevent the husband or wife from...
Benefiting.
Benefiting.
Each other, right. From conferring an official benefit on each other.
I guess I'm just thinking, like, in, in less long ter, so, in the case of workplace supervision, then, you know, okay, then eventually they'll, but in the case of a contract or, you know, some other more short-term manner, it's, you know...
Good point.
If there's a question, you can always rely on an opinion from your, your ethics board, and you can submit it as an opinion, you know, help us work through this.
Actually, these days, it's not unusual for fiancees to be a member of the household of the person to whom they are affianced, and that would be captured by this code. And so, we, so we're really talking only about someone who is a fiancee and the couple is not living together.
So, right, because there's that, if you say member of household, then you're not necessarily including fiancee unless you specifically include it.
Right.
This is, I mean, this isn't something that I'm, like, going to lose sleep over at night, just wanted to...
I think there's one other thing I'd like to say, and that is that the reason members of household are included is that there's a certain common economic interest.
Right.
There, and dependent also, there's a, there's a common economic interest. For a fiancee that's not a member of the household, we generally, a social relationship is generally not a, a disqualifying interest. And I guess being a fiancee is the ultimate social relationship, unless and until the marriage occurs.
Right. So, are, are you suggesting that if the, the board could consider adding member of household to the, the list?
Well, no. We, we do say member of household in the context of this, of the code. In the code provisions, that, for example...
Spouse, registered domestic partner, child, stepchild, dependent parent, stepparent, sibling, or stepsibling of a village officer.
Let me show you what I mean. If you look at section forty-one dash four, these are the categories of people for whom you may not confer an official benefit. And it says in B, a relative or a member of his or her household.
Okay. That's fine. So, I guess that satisfies my question regarding that. So, I guess just if we wanted to add grandparent and grandchild to the, the list of, the definition of relative?
Certainly could do that, if, if that's what the board wishes to do. That would be fine.
Is that not perceived as a relative?
Well, it's not, it's not included in the, in the definition as the, as the law is currently drafted. We can, we can add that, that, no problem.
What do you think?
It doesn't bother me.
Right. And, you know, of course, we should note that this doesn't prevent anyone from conferring a personal gift upon a grandparent or a grandchild. It's just conferring an official benefit.
Right.
You would be required to recuse yourself in an official matter that would result in a benefit being conferred upon a grandparent or grandchild. Okay? So, that's...
Just taking a step back in, in purpose, I just had one other word in the sec, in the second line, first sentence. Officers and employees of the Village of Port Jefferson hold their positions to serve and benefit the public and not to obtain, it says unwarranted personal or private gain.
Right.
Is the word unwarranted necessary, or is it, does it, is it sort of a subjective word that leaves it more open?
Well, officers and employees are compensated for their services to the village. That's a private gain. Sometimes, and, and are often entitled to the same benefits of citizenship in the village that the public is entitled to.
Okay.
So, for example, if there's a village park, you have just as much right to enjoy the benefits of using that park as anyone else.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
And then just one more step back. I, I was researching other ethics codes and, and preambles, and so I didn't know if we wanted to add some kind of text to expand upon the purpose and, and speak to the, the desire to increase public confidence, which is, you know, something that has been talked about, you know, as far as this code goes, but I don't see sort of explicitly in here to, you know, to, to codify that the board, you know, the purpose of this exercise and code change is to increase the public's confidence in its government.
I, I have no problem with that. And, and what I normally say in my training programs is that, that the goals are to foster public confidence by ensuring not only the reality growth of the appearance of integrity in village government, and also to provide guidance to village officers and employees.
Yeah, I mean, we could just cut and paste that.
Does that change the nature of the code?
No. Right.
If we were in the United Nations, we'd have five pages of wheres's, so...
I, I provided a full day of ethics training to the United Nations Ethics Office. And imagine drafting an ethics code for an organization, a worldwide organization. A gift of seventy-five dollars in New York is insignificant. A gift of seventy-five dollars in Bangladesh could feed a family for who knows how long.
Sure. So, do you do a percentage of...
What, what...
Anyway, sorry, we won't, I won't, sidebar.
I'm curious too.
I am too, I'm curious.
But, 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 that's not why we're...
I'll answer very quickly. This is a rule-based code. There are also aspirational-based, values-based codes, values-based codes. And the United Nations Code has, has more values-based rules and aspirational materiality. Okay?
Okay.
So, applicability just is a section, not every provision applies to all, all village officers and employees, and this indicates who the various sections apply to. And that includes independent contractors who, who are regulated to, to a degree by section forty-one dash eleven. So, that's what forty-one dash three is about.
Should we include committees in that? That's one of my questions that I had. We, we have boards, we have commissions, we have, we have committees as well.
Right. Well, let me tell you what the, how, Article eighteen defines officer or employee in the same way that this code does. It's an officer, municipal officer or employee is defined to mean an officer or employee of a municipality, whether paid or unpaid, including members of any administrative board commission or other agency thereof, and, and so forth. So, I was asked about committees, and members of committees generally are uncompensated. But there are committees that decide whether to plant petunias or daisies. And there are committees that make recommendations as to how the village should spend its money, how it should permit development, and other much more substantive matters. And if I were making the judgment, I would apply the, the Code of Conduct to the one and consider not applying it to the other. So, I would, I would make that determination based upon what the committee does, rather than its status as a committee.
So, who would make that determination?
The Board of Ethics.
The Board of Ethics, okay.
Is it, I guess I'm not seeing the, the downside to including the committees. I mean, does, so, does every board, board, agency, department, and, and commission member, they'll need to fill out the disclosure form?
No, I don't think, I don't think we require it of everyone. There is a section of this code that indicates who must file, and I'll tell you where that is.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's towards the back somewhere. I just, I don't know, to Bob's point, I'm just wondering if there's a downside to including our committee members who, even if they are making, you know, changes that aren't financial necessarily, or, or, you know, deemed as, as impactful, they're still representing the village, they still sign, you know, for a, a term of, of service for the village?
Well, if somebody is serving a fixed term and, and files an oath of office, that's probably an indication that they already meet the definition of the code in this code of officer and employee.
Done, yeah.
And the fact that they're serving on a committee doesn't have an impact on that.
Right. So, so maybe clarifying that somehow, because some of, I think our task forces, you know, are sort of pop-up things that come and go, and they don't...
Like the, the one I'm doing now with the, it's a power plant, I forget the name.
Working group.
Working group.
Yeah, working group.
There's no need for, we're not, they're not...
The sixtieth anniversary, no. But then you have, like, the Architectural Review Committee, the Conservation Advisory Council, they do sign for a term.
The Architectural Review Committee I would absolutely regard as populated by persons who are required to comply with this, with this code.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering if we could further clarify this language at all?
Well...
Maybe adding, you know, if, if they, if they sign the, the oath of, of service?
Those are the sorts of criteria that you don't have to codify in the law. That's going to be the, the lawyer for the Board of Ethics. If the Board of Ethics is called upon to determine whether someone is or is not an officer or employee of the union, the, the attorney for the Board of Ethics is going to instruct them on, on the law. And there is, there's case law, there are statutes that indicate who the officers and employees of a municipality are. And I, I think if you start overdrafting, you're going to create a variety of complications. First of all, if you name one and do not name another, it's, that, that's going to be interpreted as excluding the one that's not named.
Well, I guess that's why, I mean, the, the point that we hit on is signing that, that book, signing the...
The oath of office.
Yeah, the oath of office.
That's already in there under the municipal law.
Is it?
If, if you are, if you...
The municipal law is in the code, and the municipal law decide, defines who a, who a...
If you are serving for a fixed term and have filed an oath of office, you're an officer. You're an officer. You're not an officer at, within the meaning of the village law, because the village law sets forth who the officers of the village are, but you are an officer within the meaning of Article eighteen of the general municipal law and within the meaning of this Code of Ethics.
Okay.
The, the other thing is, you don't want to, I don't know about the village, whether this is the case in the Village of Port Jefferson, but in many municipalities, it's not that easy to populate all your boards and committees, particularly the ones that are uncompensated. And you want to, of course, be careful not to make it more difficult to do that.
Well, I, I don't, I guess I'm not seeing the difficulty that's added by just saying that if they've signed the book, then they, you know, went a handbook, because I, I think that's what I'm excited about creating this document, is that it will be a clear handbook for all of our village officers to, you know, and employees to have, to be really clear about what, you know, what is expected of them as either a paid or unpaid officer of the village. So, I hear what you're saying about not over-prescribing or, or pointing out, I just don't know, you know, if we were to add language that said, you know, officer of the village, even if it's redundant with Article eighteen, or chap, chapter eighteen, is there...
What he's saying is, if you put something like that in, you might create something which will, how do I say it?
Take on a meaning of it.
Take on a meaning of its own, for instance, and be ca, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not understa, can you give an example?
Well, here's, here's what, here's what I can do. In forty-one dash three, A, applicability, A says, "This chapter applies to all officers and employees of the Village of Port Jefferson, whether paid or unpaid, including the members of any village, department, agency, board, or commission, and all persons serving the village for a fixed term subject to an oath of office."
I, I like that language.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
He must have gone to law school or something.
Now, does that change the nature of the code?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
So, at present, we don't have an oath of office for a lot of our councils and committees.
Right. Well, committees, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
If they're...
Councils, we do.
If they're sw, if they are, what's the word that you used? If they, just jumped out of my head.
They have to take the oath.
They have to take an oath if they're on a committee that creates policy.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Does it seem, does it seem...
That's established.
Does it seem, does it seem?
No.
They don't?
No.
Are they supposed to?
I would assume, and to my knowledge, the reincarnated recreation and parks committee members haven't signed any...
No, they did.
They did?
Yeah. I know Kelly signed, when, when she was on it.
Okay. But to my knowledge, the CCMAC is not signing an oath.
Never has had to.
I don't think so, yeah.
And the CCMAC is in the code.
Yeah, it is the code.
So, this is, so, can I just interject to say that this code and the board can help us, help guide us through...
Yes.
...these things that may be deficient?
Or, or subject to interpretation, not deficient, but subject to interpretation. I, I will, it just occurred to me, another phrase, it just occurred to me that I think could be added. I would say, "And, without limiting the foregoing, all persons serving the village for a fixed term subject to an oath of office," so that it's not interpreted to mean only people serving for a fixed term subject to an oath of office are subject to the code.
So, then we can...
Yeah, so then it becomes a matter of interpretation.
Implement.
Yes. Based upon what, you know, in, in the area of financial disclosure, there are criteria for deciding who is a policymaker as that term is used. And one of the principles is that you apply the policymaker criteria not only to the person's duties, not, not only to the duties associated with that person's position, but also to the duties that they actually perform, because often in government, somebody is in one title, but they're performing the duties of another title. So, the same, so what the person actually does for government is significant, and it's significant in determining whether they should be covered by the code, by the Code of Conduct.
Is there any downside to having folks who are working with the village on any committee or in any way possible take an oath? Does it water down?
No.
Or...
It doesn't water down anything, it's just, you know, perhaps an unnecessary layer of regulation.
A working group.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not committing...
Spitballing.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay. So, that brings us to forty-one dash four, which I think is the most obvious and logical provision, but even there, there's, there's room for exercise, exercise of discretion. As I said, these are the categories of persons and entities for whom a village official may not use their position to confer, to confer a benefit. And the categories are as follows: himself or herself, a relative or member of his or her household, any private organization in which he or she has an interest. And here's, the, the next, the next one is an area where you could exercise some discretion if you wish. A client or customer from which the officer or employee knows that he or she, his or her outside employer, firm, limited liability company, partnership, or association, or corporation, in which he or she is the owner of more than five percent of the outstanding corporate stock, directly or indirectly derived income in excess of five thousand dollars during the previous twenty-four months. So, this essentially means that you can't confer benefit on a customer of yours or your employer's if you know that they have done more than five thousand dollars worth of business with you or your employer during the past two years. And both the dollar amount and the time period are, you know, exercises of discretion on your part. So, five thousand, you don't want to set the bar too low, because then people are unnecessarily being forced to recuse themselves. And you don't want to make the time period too expansive, because then you'll pull in more, more customers than, than you really wish to do. So, five thousand dollars in two years. And it's based upon actual knowledge.
And is this looking retroactively, or from the implementation scale, from the...
Yes. Well, yeah, it's from the time that the official action would take place, looking back, two years.
Or is this question, if, like, when this code is adopted, are we looking at the start date of the code with all of this applying moving forward, or was the retroactive question to...
No. What would happen is, if the day after the code becomes effective, a customer of yours comes before you, who has done more than five thousand dollars of business with you during the past two years, you would be, and should be, required to recuse yourself.
Sure.
What I just want to point out that some people have an issue with, and that's why it's, it's based upon actual knowledge, is you might have a member of this board who's a partner in a national or international law firm, and they have countless clients, and that board member doesn't even know who all the clients of the firm are. Now, law firms, maybe that's not the best example, because law firms do conflict checks. A conflict check could be done, but I guess it is a good example, because you wouldn't want a board member to have to do a conflict check every time a matter comes before the Board of Trustees. So, that's why we say, if that board member doesn't know that this is a client of the firm who's done more than five thousand dollars worth of business, they're not precluded from voting. It's based upon their knowledge.
It's similar, you know, with the financial disclosure. You own a mutual fund.
Right, right.
That's invested in maybe hundreds of companies, and all of a sudden, they're before you.
Right.
I might not know exactly what's in my mutual fund.
Right, I agree. Yep. Okay, and the final point is, a person from whom the officer or employee has received a private loan, gift, or other benefit, having a value of seventy-five dollars or more during the past year, or multiple loans, gifts, tips, or other benefits from the same lender or donor in a twelve-month period, having an aggregate value of seventy-five dollars or more. The seventy-five dollar threshold is the threshold for regulating gifts under the, under the code.
Is, can we consider adding services to that? Like loan, gift, tip? I, I know other benefits.
Yeah. I think benefit does capture it. And also, in the section regulating gifts, we define, we define it in that way.
All right, very good. And it, and is there verbiage about fair market value?
I think there, there is. Let's find it. There is a table of contents, I should have looked at it.
That's section forty-one seventeen, gifts, tips, and benefits.
Yep. Yep. For the purpose of this section, the terms gift, tip, and other benefit include any ... Yep, for the purpose of this section, the terms gift, tip, and other benefit include anything of value, whether in the form of money, service, loan, travel, entertainment, hospitality, thing or promise, or in any other form, the value of a gift, tip, or other benefit is its fair market value, determined by retail cost of the item or a comparable item. The fair market value of a ticket entitling the holder to food, refreshment, entertainment, or any other benefit is the face value of the ticket or the actual cost to the donor.
Do we have that?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Do we have that?
Yes, that's in forty-one dash seventeen D.
Got it, got it, thank you.
So, the only thing that you might want to do is, in forty-one dash four E, where the word gift appears, say gift as defined by forty-one dash seventeen, whatever it was.
D.
D, thank you.
Does it, since it is clarified in D for the purpose of this section, and then it defines, and then it says gifts, does that cover it?
Well, I, I think section refers to section forty-one dash seventeen, not the entire code. The code is, I assume, a chapter of the Village Code. The Code of Ethics is a chapter of the Village Code, it's not a section. So, the reference, the use of the word section doesn't encompass the entire code.
No, I, I understand, but I'm just, uh, this checks, oh, so, yeah. And my, my reading of that would be that, that, that seven, forty-one seventeen D covers forty-one seventeen E, because they're in the same section?
Uh, forty-one seventeen, no, well, it's, um, it's, oh, yes, I didn't, wait a second, I'm sorry. We were looking at forty-one dash four E.
Ah.
Stop confusing me.
I think you had it right. To refer to-
Right.
Forty-one dash seventeen, when you're, when you're defining-
And that's an example of, of what I mean about defining a term in context-
Yeah.
Rather than having somebody need to go to a definitional section in the beginning, which they might miss, not realize is there, and misinterpret what they're reading in the code.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
That's why I, I think you should keep defined terms to a minimum.
So, your suggestion was to potentially add to forty-one four D?
Forty-one dash four E.
E.
Where the word gift appears on the end of the first line?
As defined in-
Yes, parentheses, as defined in, yeah.
I think that was franken, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are we okay with seventy-five? Do we think it should be, I just had a question, I don't know if it should be, it should be fifty, should it be twenty-five, or seventy-five, okay?
That is the state-
That's, that's what the general municipal law uses as a threshold, and I think to the extent that if we don't need to, I wouldn't depart from the state law, because that lends confusion, you know. The one municipality on the east end, I noticed one time when I was looking at various codes, increased the threshold from seventy-five dollars to a higher amount, which of course a municipality may not do, because seventy-five dollar, the seventy-five dollar threshold appears in the general municipal law, and a local Code of Ethics can prohibit conduct that Article eighteen allows, but it may not allow conduct that Article eighteen prohibits.
Right.
Didn't the state at some point also lower it? I know, I think legislature for a huge, there was, was five bucks.
So, they raised it.
So, they raised, they did raise it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't remember what it was when it was originally enacted.
Yeah.
The, the Article eighteen was enacted in, in the late, in, in the nineteen sixties, when seventy-five dollars was a much more considerable sum than it is today.
Yeah, I, I recall that, working at the university.
Yeah.
You couldn't even take a cup of coffee, like-
Couldn't accept a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
The federal government has a zero tolerance policy, but I think that kind of zero tolerance policy turns good, honest, conscientious people into lawbreakers, and you don't want to do that.
Yeah, right. So, we're adding as defined by, gift as defined by forty-one seventeen D?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, prohibited interests, I'm sorry?
Within, not by, but within.
As defined by.
As defined by.
As defined by, yeah. Prohibited interest in contracts is directly from Article eighteen, it's really the core feature of Article eighteen. The village may not enter into a contract that would confer a benefit on anyone who has the power or duty to approve the contract, to approve payments under the contract, to audit bills rendered under the contract, or to hire or fire anyone who has the power to do, or duty to do any of those things. And the contract of a spouse or household member is attributed to the officer or employee, the contract of a corporation in which they own more than five percent of the stock, or a partnership in which they're a partner, or a, or their employer provided that there's an exception if they don't have anything to do with the contract, and there's, and, and the compensation isn't affected by it. But a contract entered into in violation of that section is void ab initio, is void from the outset, it's not voidable at the discretion of the municipality, they may not enter into it. A knowing and willful violation is a misdemeanor. And recusal, recusal does not cure a violation of this section, the reason being that it's the contract that's prohibited by law, not the act of voting for the contract. So, um-
So, there's no right way to make a wrong?
That's right, that's right.
Is it, is that worth defining? Again, if, if this is to sort of be the guidebook for, or, you know, the guidance for all of these officers and employees, is that worth putting in, you know?
I, I think it's, it's best to track Article eighteen. We're really incorporating Article eighteen, the Article eighteen rule here, and then presumably your Board of Ethics is going to have the guidance of an attorney who knows enough to look at Article eighteen, to be familiar with it, and to know how to interpret this. The, the reason it's incorporated here, it would apply here whether that appeared in this Code of Ethics or not, because Article eighteen applies in the village. The reason it's here is we don't want anybody to be misled into thinking that they're looking at a code that contains all the rules, without realizing that there's an entirely, there's an additional set of rules in the state law. We want it to have one-stop shopping, so we incorporated all of the Article eighteen regulations, and then added additional local regulations all in one place.
Theoretically, officers, people should be familiar with the state law, and this is further guidance, correct?
Yes, but they don't need to look at the state law, because we've incorporated it in here.
And, and so I guess that's what I was, I know that it's not that we're codifying it for the purpose of making it different from a law that already exists, but rather to present clarity to the Port Jefferson, you know, village officers, staff, everyone who's going to read this, to, you know, to, to help keep honest people honest.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, I'm imagining, you know, two decades down the road, and, you know, ethics, you know, maybe, you know, there's, there's not such a, a light on ethics, and the, you know, manuals have all gathered dust under a, you know, a-
But the, the, one of Steve's mantras is that this code should be reviewed on a consistent basis.
And he's not wrong, but the key word there is should.
And also-
You know, and, and you just don't know what future, so, I'm looking at it through the eyes of, how do we make it easy to keep people honest in, in here? So, if, if, you know, clarifying that recusal does not, you know, resolve, you know, a conflict here, I feel like it's a simple way for this board to potentially help a theoretical person, if you-
I, I don't have any problem adding that, because it is the law. In fact, it was, you can, the, the leading case, the best case is one decided by the United States Circuit Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit, in a case involving the village of Mutton Town, from when I was the village attorney, and, and argued that case. So, there's no question, it's a, it's an established principle of law, and I can certainly add that.
Sure, thank you. Does any of the board have a-
What language would you add to that?
That violation of the section is not cured by recusal.
I have a very broad question. What is in this code, if anything, that's different than Suffolk County or NICOM?
Well, NICOM doesn't have a code. NICOM is a, an organization of municipalities, of villages. You can join, they provide information, they have a manual and other educational materials. Suffolk County has an extensive code, I haven't looked at it in a while, I commented on it when they were going through the process of adopting it. The, but I, I think maybe, I mean, I, we can, we can do that analysis, we can compare it to Suffolk County. Suffolk County, Suffolk County's needs are very different than the needs of this village. The, I, I think a, you might want instead to ask, how does this code differ from Article eighteen, which is the statewide Code of Conduct for local municipalities? And I can certainly point those out as, as we, as we go along.
Okay, those, these are much more specific.
Yes, yes. Well, as I said, we start with Article eighteen, and then we added additional regulations. So, um-
I, I agree with Trustee Cassay's point on the added language to that.
Thank you.
Well, actually, you know what? If you take a look, it, it, I think it's, it's there already. If you look at forty-one dash five A.
Of course it is.
I, I just have to remember to read, read before I answer.
Yeah.
No village officer or employee shall have an interest in any contract with the village when such officer or employee individually or as a member of a board or commission has the power or duty, whether or not exercised, to do these things. So, that's the answer, whether or not exercised.
I, I, and, and speak to that other language again, where-
Versus the violation of this section will not be cured by recusal. I mean, that's really what that says, whether you exercise the power to approve it or not.
Is this-
Can we put that in anyway, just-
Is it redundant?
To be clearer, it, it might be redundant, but reading it as a-
Right, because like, what if-
As a non-attorney.
Right, what if someone chooses not to, just not to show up, you know, to that, that meeting, and they think that, oh, well, then it's, it's okay, becau- you know?
That's not exercised, so.
Right.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, though, plain language.
Yeah, yeah, because again, I, I am enthusiastic about this, because it's, it, it will help everyone understand clearly, and so we just don't want people to trip up on-
So, what I would suggest is that after the phrase, whether or not exercised, I'll add another parenthetical saying something to the effect of, i.e., a violation of this section shall not be cured by recusal.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me ask a question, going back to, just one second, something that we brought up, and that is, as part of the code, you said best practices to have it reviewed on a periodic basis. Have you seen anything anywhere where it's been codified that the policies and procedures be reviewed on a periodic basis? I know I've been on boards where they-
Yeah. I, I haven't.
Not, not these types of boards, but-
And I think, you know, that's really a matter of discretion with each, each elected board.
And just thinking of it now, I know, I'm just thinking, you can't commit a future legislative body to do something.
Right, right.
With that, yeah, so, I just answered my own question.
Is there, no, but it's a great point, I wonder, legally, we can't commit a future legislative body, but in, in the intro or provisions, is that, just checking if it's already there before we have a whole conversation about it. You know, is that something that I could say, you know, the, the intent is for future legislative bodies to periodically review?
Regular review and-
Yeah.
Well, actually-
That is there, is there?
I'll tell you where, where that sort of is indirectly, among the powers and duties of the Board of Ethics, is to make recommendations to the Board of Trustees for amendments or additions.
It's assumed that they'll be meeting on a periodic basis, and-
Well, this code requires them to meet at least once quarterly.
Yeah, okay, yep, so it's there.
Because I, I found that in municipalities throughout the state, they have boards of ethics that haven't met since Herbert Hoover was President of the United States. And, and so, it's better to have them come together at least once a quarter and talk about it, you know? It also gives the pub, the, the public and the, and the workforce an opportunity to address the Board of Ethics.
So, going down to forty-one dash six, refers to forty-one dash four, and that's recu- the subject matter is recusal.
Right.
So, it does-
Yes, and you know what, I, it occurred to me, I would move forty-one dash six to forty-one dash five. So, it'd make, I would just swap out those sections.
You'd, you'd, you'd make it forty-one dash five, and then forty-one dash five has become forty-one dash six?
Yes.
Yeah, so, it, it, it defines it, and then you get the-
Yes, I like that.
Support, and just a typo.
Okay.
Section fourteen, just above the current forty-one dash six? I think it's the first line, yeah.
No, it's just slang.
I told, I told you at the public meeting that I write with a special reverse disappearing ink, and my mistakes only appear after I've submitted a document. Okay, so, now, forty-one dash seven is prohibitions inapplicable, recusal and disclosure not required. These are exceptions, these are areas in which you do not have to recuse yourself.
Okay.
Adoption of the village's annual budget. You know, I don't, I don't know whether members of this board are compensated, but if you are, then your salaries are determined in the budget, and yet you are voting to approve the budget, which contains your own salaries.
Mm-hmm.
That is not a conflict of interest, and the reason it's not a conflict of interest is that the village must have a budget, and there is no one to whom you could lawfully delegate responsibility of adopting the budget. So, it's the rule, rule of necessity, you can adopt the budget. Any matter requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affects any of the following groups or people, or a similarly situated class: all or substantially all village officers and employees, all or substantially all residents or taxpayers of the village, or an area of the village, the general public. The reason those three are not a prohibited conflict is because a prohibited conflict is one that's personal or private to you, it's not one that you share with a large number of others. So, for example, if you decided to rezone a large portion of the village, and your homes are in that large portion, that would not be a prohibited, a disqualifying conflict, because the rezoning would not affect you any differently than it would affect a large number of others. If, giving a silly example, you were to get together one night and decide to rezone only your own homes, then obviously that would be a very different case. Next, a ministerial matter, and that is a matter which does not require the exercise of judgment or discretion. The reason conflicts of interest are prohibited is because they tend to undermine the independent exercise of judgment and discretion. If you have no judgment or discretion to exercise, there can be no prohibited conflict of interest. Uncompensated participation by a member of the village Board of Trustees, or by his or her staff on behalf of such member in public advocacy, whether or not on behalf of a constituent. Appearance by a village employee before a village department, agency, board, or commission in a representative capacity on behalf of an employee organization in any matter- in any matter where such appearance is duly authorized. So that's union, that's the union representative. Seven, uncompensated participation in public advocacy by a village officer or employee who serves as a political party chairperson. And recusal is not required, but disclosure is required when a matter, when the rule of necessity is invoked. And two, yeah, I mean, one and two, that's what we said, described before as the rule of necessity. The entire board would be disqualified, you wouldn't have a quorum, and there's no one else to whom the matter can be lawfully delegated. Then you don't have to accuse yourself. Investments in conflict with official duties and private employment, basically both follow the same underlying principle based upon that case that I spoke about, people ex Rorion versus Green. You can't, you can hold two positions, whether they be two government positions or a government position and one of outside employment, or a government position and own an outside business. That's not, that's permitted provided that there's no law against it, as there sometimes is. In Nassau County, there's a law that says you can't be on the assessment commission and also be a real estate broker. That's a specific law that prohibits that.
Sure.
But in the absence of such a law, you can hold two positions provided that they're not inherently incompatible. To determine whether they're inherently incompatible, you look at their duties. The classic example of two incompatible positions, chief financial officer on the one hand, and auditor on the other. Sometimes said you can't be your own boss. So, for example, if you are a member of the county planning commission, you can't also be a member of the village zoning board because section two thirty-nine of the general municipal law requires that the zoning board make referrals to the planting, to the planning commission of certain specified matters and can only act after the county has either failed to act or issued, indicated that it's an issue of local concern. If the planning commission says otherwise, if they, if they vote against the proposed action, then the zoning board can only approve it with a supermajority. Same is true of the Board of Trustees or any other village board that is dealing with matters in those specific categories. So that would be an example of two incompatible positions. That would be an example of being your own boss.
And you're a vast experience on doing, making these policies for various villages. I'm assuming you've seen some problems on committees and boards and things like that. Can you give us examples of a couple that you might have? Not naming any municipality, but, but we might share the same problems.
Right.
Is it mostly in the planning zoning?
Land use boards are, are, are fertile ground for problems because there's so much money involved. And, and land use regulation is one of the central functions of local government. That's why we require officers and employees to disclose the real estate that they own in, within the municipality to determine whether, as best we can, whether there are conflicts. But examples of problems, you know, in one municipality there was a problem of members having what's called ex-party communications with applicants, representatives, and, and ex-party communication is one that's outside of the hearing. A, a board that makes a decision after a public hearing must make that decision based upon the evidence adduced at the hearing and not based upon conversations that took place outside of, outside of the public hearing. That's because the applicant is entitled to a record that they can use in, to challenge the decision. A member of the public opposing the application is entitled to that same record. The decision is subject to judicial review. Also, the public, any member of the public who's either in favor or opposed is entitled to address an issue that may be raised outside of their hearing. So communications outside of the context of a public hearing are a problem. I've also dealt with a municipality, municipality where they had a problem because members of the Board of Trustees who were appointed as liaisons to particular departments within the, within the municipality misunderstood what their role was and thought that they were the supervisors of that department, when actually they're, they're not, they're just facilitators of communication. So, you know, there are other sorts of things that, that can come up, but those are the two that come to mind.
What about if, if someone holds a, a position in a firm? And that, you know, obviously if that firm is presenting a case to, say, the planning board or the zoning board, then that member would recuse themselves, even if they're not on the case, right, for, for public, you know, at the very least for, for public confidence? But I guess, what about if someone sits on a planning or zoning board? And then can, if they are not representing a contract, can the village enter into a contract with that firm?
If the board member does not have the power or duty to approve the contract, to approve payments, to order bills, to hire or fire anyone who has the power or duty to do those things, it's not a prohibited contract.
Thank you.
I will, I will say, I just thought of something else that comes up from time to time. You know, recusal, as you've heard me say, recusal means remove yourself entirely from any involvement in the matter. So if you recuse yourself, you don't influence your colleagues. You don't talk to them about it, you don't try to persuade them to decide it in a particular way. You have a conflict of interest, and that's why you've removed yourself from any participation. Sometimes a board member will not understand what recusal really means, and they'll recuse themselves, get up off the dais as they should to demonstrate to the public that they're not participating, and then go participate from the audience. That is obviously not an effective recusal. Changing your seat does not eliminate the conflict. You may not do from the audience that which you're prohibited from doing from the dais.
Just had another question in forty-one eight, in, excuse me, so it's B one. It says, "The section shall not prohibit a village officer or employee from acquiring or maintaining the following. Number one is real property located within the village and used as his or own personal residence." And I just, there's, I don't see what that's responding to. It's almost like there's an implication that one may not acquire real property that's not their personal residence, so commercial or, or residential property that's not their primary residence.
Well. A is what the employee may not do, the officer or employee may not do. One is maintain an investment that requires the village officer to frequently or inevitably recuse.
Sure.
Second, that would impair independence of judgment in the exercise of his, her official powers or duties. And then B are the, are just carving out some exceptions that are permitted. For example, owning less than five percent of the stock of a publicly traded corporation, bonds, owning bonds or notes issued by the village and acquired more than one year after the date of issue, and ownership of residential real property used as the personal residence.
Right, but like, for instance, B two is responding to, somewhere else in the code that talks about, like, you cannot own more than five percent. So here it says you may own less than five percent of stock. So I'm just wondering if, if B one is responding to something which would prohibit or, or otherwise put some kind of, you know, rules around owning commercial or residential property that's not their primary residence?
The mind can conceive of a factual scenario in which the ownership of a, of real property in the village would give rise to a conflict of interest.
Sure.
And this is just making it clear that if it's your personal residence, it doesn't give rise to a, you're not prohibited from owning the property. It may require, it, it still may require recusal. You know, that, those, those exceptions are not, are not essential.
Yeah, I'm not arguing against the, I mean, one, for, for many of the boards, including this one, you, you must own, you know, and have the property, residential property as your.
Yes.
Primary residence here in Fort Jefferson. So again, I just didn't, in reading through, I made the note, and I didn't find sort of the, the solution. I'm not saying it's definitely not in here, but to, you know, whether or not it, this code is saying there is a conflict of interest if you own property that is not your residential property.
No, it doesn't say that. It does not say that.
And so, so there's no, if you, you know, by imply, so there's no implication with this, it's just clarifying?
Yeah, I mean, that was the intent. If it's causing a question in your mind, then maybe it's, it's clarifying in reverse.
Right, 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 yeah. Did anyone else?
I didn't see that until you brought it up. I mean, is that, can I not buy my house next door to me if it goes up for sale and I want to invest in the property but not live there?
Well, I can imagine a scenario in which you might not be able to. It would be, it would not be a common instance, but if you were, you know, regulating.
Rights.
Yeah, if you, if you were involved in, in some sort of land use regulation that gave, that caused that purchase or that transaction to give rise to a conflict of interest, it, it's, it's possible.
Or if you were, your intent was to rent that house, you are involved in making rules about the rentals in the.
Right, but what if I was to buy it and say, I'm buying it for, for my son?
You're gonna flip it or something?
Or not even that, you're just gonna buy it and have my son live.
You see, ethics questions, ethics question, the devil is always in the details. It's hard to, to discuss this in the abstract.
Sure.
Sure.
There's always some unanticipated way in which something comes before, before you that could potentially raise an ethics issue.
I guess what I'm getting hung up on is the, the personal residence.
Yeah.
For this.
I guess maybe it's just not necessary at all. If it's not saying that, if it's not your personal residence, that it's expressly prohibited, though we under, I think we all understand that in following other sections of the code, if you're making an investment that's in, in conflict with your duties, then that could be a specific conflict.
The only thing is, I, I think that the concern that you have that somehow saying.
Seven?
Saying one thing creates an implication of another that's not said.
Yeah.
Is not really, you know, you read the law as drafted.
Right.
And the presumption is that the, that the drafters, the Board of Trustees, said what they meant and meant what they said. And if they didn't say it, it's not, it's not a part of the law.
It says, "The section shall not prohibit a village invoice of officer or employee from acquiring or maintaining the following."
Right.
Real property located and used as.
You see.
Oh, so B is really clarifying one, I think.
B is clarifying A. B is, B are exceptions to A. Yes, and, and B one really is, it relates to the ownership of an investment. Well, I mean, real property is an investment.
Right.
And I think what we're saying here is that when we talk about an investment, we're not talking about your personal residence.
Right.
That's really what we're saying.
I was going to bring up the example, like in financial disclosure. Generally, they want to know about anything but your personal property. I mean, your personal residence. And I think that's what, I'm reading it that way. I'm not reading it as I'm being prohibited from.
Right, that, that's, that's the intent. The intent is just to say that when we're regulating investments, it's not our intention to be regulating your personal residence.
Right.
Okay.
Can we, can we go back to recusal for a sec?
Sure.
Forty-one six?
Yep.
At what point, you know, sometimes there's situations where someone comes before the board and has some, you know, issues that they have to mitigate before they can actually get approval on certain things. At what point does, does the recusal begin? Because, you know, this is, this can be perceived as, and you want to remove the perception of impropriety, right?
I'll, I'll just come out and say it. We have folks on certain boards who work for certain companies who appear before the boards, and those people have to recuse on those projects. And is that, it's one of the things I've seen in my short time.
And we're, it's unclear. So do you, do you say, okay, legal counsel or Board of Ethics, can you weigh in on this before this takes a, a bad turn, or?
So it's hard to define in the law when, when life begins. But, but you should recuse yourself when there's an actual or potential conflict of interest. I would be very reluctant to penalize anybody for not recusing themselves over a potential conflict of interest. So you have to be, you have to have your eyes and ears open. You have to be thinking.
Also, to your point earlier, when we were discussing boards and committees, you're in a small village, and acquiring talent with a, with a degree of knowledge about a specific subject is sometimes difficult.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And that's why on, on land use boards, you have architects and engineers.
Yep.
Now, here's a typical problem. An architect or an engineer is practicing his or her profession in the village. You can't agree to receive or receive compensation in connection with a matter before your own board. So you can't say, I'm recusing myself, I'm the architect who drew up the plans on this application. Or I'm recusing myself, I'm the engineer on this project. You can't agree to receive or receive compensation for a matter before your own agency.
So the cart, the horse, which one, how do you determine?
Well, if it's clear that the matter is going before the land use board that you're a member of, you shouldn't get involved. If it's something that you could not predict. I had a matter in, in, in another municipality. A municipal, a mem, an attorney in the municipal attorney's office referred a coworker to a law firm, to a friend from law school, working in a law firm, because that coworker had an accident. And the, the action was commenced, and the defendant in that lawsuit pled in, brought in as a third party defendant, the municipality. And this was completely unpredictable at the time that the municipal attorney made the referral. It could not have been predicted. And the question was, was, the municipal attorney was now being offered a referral fee by the law firm to which the, the recommend, that the referral was made. And, and an opinion just issued last week, the ruling was that that municipal attorney could accept the referral fee primarily because the municipality was not involved at the time the referral was made. There was no way it could have been predicted. The municipal attorney was not involved in the matter at all. And it just seemed to me to be the more reasonable resolution of that matter. So, so too, if I'm an architect or an engineer or a real estate broker or, you know, a practitioner of any livelihood in the village, and something that comes before my board and I could not have predicted that it would at the time that I rented compensated services, I don't have a problem with that. But if I know that you are asking for a, a survey in order to apply to. in order to apply to the zoning board for a var- for variance because you're violating a setback, and I'm a member of the zoning board and also a surveyor, that's, that's a job that I should not accept because I know it's coming to me.
What if, what if it's not coming to you? You're on a board with a special expertise and people then come to you because I know that he knows the village rules, or she, and I will then not have any problem with my whatever.
Well, I think that is absolutely-
Painting wall or whatever it is.
That is absolutely okay. I think your knowledge and experience belong to you. They're your intellectual property and I think you're free to exploit them. What you're not free to do is exercise improper influence, uh, use your official position to confer a benefit. So if it's, if you're just sharing your knowledge, uh, I don't have a problem with that. Of course, if you're acting contrary to the interests of the village, that, that's a different matter. So, you know, the, as I said, the devil is always in the details.
And what if you're a member of a firm that has seven hundred people in the firm? You happen to be on the land use board.
And then what happens?
And someone else in the firm is working on the project and, you know, you're on the, the, the land use.
Right. If your partner, well, this question came up in Nassau County once. A young lawyer wanted to be appointed to a land use board in the county. And, um, she said in her request to the board of ethics for advice, my firm from time to time appears before that board. I intend to recuse myself when that occurs. May I be a member of the board that my firm occasionally appears before? The answer was that she could because she was a young associate. Young associates do not share in the profits of the firm. They get paid a salary. So if her salary, if her compensation was unaffected by the matter and she was not involved in the matter at all, no conflict. Unless, remember I said that you can't have incompatible positions? If one position is forcing you to frequently and inevitably recuse yourself, that's a pretty good sign that those positions are incompatible. So if the firm occasionally appears before the board, that's one thing. If they frequently appear before the board, that's another thing because then the recusals would be preventing that board member from discharging the duties of her office. And we don't want that.
Not that too.
Okay, so let's see. We are now at forty-one dash nine. And it's the same principle, private employment in conflict with duties, but we have a few additional, uh, a few different additional concepts here. The first is that you can't, uh, receive compensation for a matter before your own, uh, oh, actually, A applies to the board of trustees and its staff. And you can't receive compensation or agree to receive compensation in connection with, uh, any proposed local law of the village board of trustee, uh, uh, re- local law or resolution of the village board of trustees. No officer or employee shall, uh, accept private secondary employment. Uh, that requires the exercise of discretion. While the matter, uh, I'm sorry. No village officer or employee shall request or accept uh, a, a secondary employment opportunity with any person or organization that has a matter pending before that officers, officer or employee's, uh, board or agency, uh, while it's pending or within sixty days afterwards. And that's because we don't want to create the appearance that there's some sort of quid pro quo taking place. The, uh, C one is incompatibility. C two is, uh, frequent and inevitable recusals. C three is, uh, an outside, uh, activity that, um, may require uh, the disclosure or personal use of confidential, uh, information, uh, acquired by reason of serving the village. Four-
Which could lend itself to that real estate question that we're discussing?
If it's confidential information.
Mm-hmm.
Confidential information in the government context is a much more limited idea than it is in the private sector because we believe in transparency and openness in government.
Mm-hmm.
So it's ver- the very specific categories of information that the village can withhold from public disclosure. Uh, five is you can't handle a matter before any village board, department or agency that is contingent upon the outcome. Uh, four, did I skip four? That's, um, you can't agree to receive or receive compensation in connection with a matter before your own agency. Six involves the representation of a person or organization other than the village in any application, request, claim or proposal before any village department, agency, board or commission, or any litigation, negotiations or matter requiring the exercise of discretion to which the village is a party.
So I assume this would pertain to me that as a village trustee, I can't be hired by the village to do something?
You can't be both an elected official and an employee of the village.
Or a contractor.
Or, eh, well, member of the board of trustees absolutely may not be a contractor because then you're violating that prohibition against contracts with the village.
So you cannot be compensated for any activity that you conduct?
You can't be compensated either as an employee or as a contractor.
Because you're voting on your own employment.
Even if you don't vote?
Even if you recuse yourself. There's no, right.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so, um,
So are you saying that the board cannot vote for raises for the board?
No, he said that that is because-
That's ministerial.
No one else can, yeah. No one else can do that.
So, uh, D is an exception. D is an exception to item number, item numbers six and seven. If you are serving the village without compensation. Six and seven is, uh, accepting employment that involves the representation of a person or organization other than the village in connection with a matter, uh, before any village department, agency, board, et cetera, or any litigation, negotiations or matter requiring the exercise of discretion to which the village is a party. You can do that if you're uncompensated, but of course, you still may not do it if it gives rise to an actual conflict of interest. The fact that you're not prohibited from doing it doesn't mean that it may not still give rise to a disqualifying conflict of interest depending upon the particular facts and circumstances. And pursuant to which, uh, the officer or employee will, will receive or enter into any agreement expressed or implied to receive compensation for services rendered in connection with any application, request, claim or proposal before any village department or, or agency, or any litigation or matter requiring the exercise of discretion to which the village is a party. Oh, six, the differ- I, just for a moment, I wasn't sure what the difference between six and seven is, but I see six involves the representation and, uh, seven, uh, involves, uh, compensation. That's the difference there. Okay, so, uh,
Can I speak of point of personal privilege?
I'm sorry.
Go blow my nose.
We take a quick pause for-
Station identification.
Yes.
Okay, sure. So you remember, we previously spoke about a rule that said that you can't seek employment with someone who's got a matter pending before your own board or agency, or for sixty days thereafter.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five dash ten A is the same rule, but involves post- uh, employment post-separation from the village. So, uh, there's a sixty-day cooling-off period, uh, because we don't want to create the appearance that there was some kind of quid pro quo, or feathering of the nest.
And that should be forty-one ten, right? Not twenty-five?
Oh, good point. Thank you. Okay. B-
Span ink again.
Yes. B is the one-year revolving door provision. For one year, you can't communicate with your, uh, former colleagues in your board, agency, or department, um, uh, on behalf of a private sector employer. Unless it's, uh, another municipality, or the Board of Ethics grants a waiver deemed to be in the best interests of the village.
Can I just, uh-
Yeah.
No, go ahead. You got this.
All right, so would that preclude someone from being involved in a not-for-profit that's involved with the village?
Uh, if they are, um- Yes.
Well, if they're compensated, no?
Yes.
But if they're not compensated?
Uh, there, there, there's an exception. Let me just see. Yeah, um- In further, uh, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't say, it doesn't refer to compensated appearances. We, we can, we can say that. We can limit it to compensated appearances.
Well, maybe, maybe you could just tell, what is, what's defined as shall appear before a committee?
Communicate.
Communicate, okay.
Yeah. So, so you can't be the face that walks the application in. You can't be the voice on the other end of the telephone. You can't send the email message. What you can do, it, we, what we do not prohibit is something that the state prohibits its former officers and employees from doing, and that is sitting in the office of your new employer and telling your colleagues how best to make the application to the village, or assisting them in preparing the application. The reason we're not prohibiting that is because, uh, at least in my judgment, that would not tend to undermine public confidence in village government, but seeing a former village employee walk an application in and discuss it with former colleagues after, shortly after leaving government, that would have the effect, in my view, of giving the impression to the public that that person has an advantage over others in, in, in dealing with the village.
Sure.
So, uh, that's the idea there.
Now, I-
...
-sector, but then down in forty-one, twelve B, um, it's saying personal representin- representations and claims, uh, permitted. Um, it does not, it does not prohibit, uh, people, you know, a previous officer or staff employee representing without compensation him or himself or herself, a relative or member of his or her household before a village department, agency, or board, uh, or, or commission, and that says other than the ones served by the village officers.
Right.
So, does that mean, um, you know, a, uh, a former trustee cannot come and speak to the Board of Trustees for a period of time? 'Cause I don't know that I'm comfortable with, with that.
Not in general, but in terms of committing-
Well, well, B, B is talking, I think it just answered my question. B is talking about future employment.
Yes, right, exactly.
So if you're-
Sure. No, but, but, I'm sorry, I've jumped out of-
I think you're looking, you're, I think what you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, is like lobbying.
Uh, it, it could, well, so this is forty-one, twelve, personal representations. So that, so we're out of future, if, if we want to come to this after, uh, we're done with, with C and, and forty-one eleven, we can do that. But forty-one, twelve, B, and Drew, I hear what you're saying, lobbying is, you know, also, uh, I, you know, could likely, it's, it's compensated, right? Um, but in forty-one, twelve, B, it's saying representing without compensation him or herself, relative, um, you know, uh, it's saying it's fine to do that except for-
No, shall not be construed, yeah.
Forty-one dash twelve is, is current officers and employees.
Um-
When, in twenty-five dash ten, we were talking about retirees or-
Or forty-one dash ten.
Yeah, yeah. What did I say? Twenty-five, I'm sorry.
The forty-one should all be twenty-five, right?
Yes. No, 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 no.
The other way around.
No, the other way around.
Twenty-five should be forty-one.
Right, okay.
So-
That is called a cut and paste error.
Yeah. Oh, I'm guilty of that.
Yeah.
So, so that is not speaking about future-
Right. That's talking about a current officer or employee of the village appearing before the village.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
So let me just ask a question on, uh, forty-one, ten, B.
Yes.
So when I'm no longer a trustee, but I've become a member of LISC.
Right.
And LISC is coming before the board to ask for permission to do whatever.
Right.
Or funding for-
Or funding.
Approval of funding for something.
You can get a waiver from the Board of Ethics. Well, first of all, if it's, if you're coming on behalf of a, of a municipality, the state or lo-, or lo-, a state or local municipality, or municipal agency, that is not prohibited. Second of all, you can get a waiver from the Board of Ethics, uh, if the Board of Ethics determines that it's, that it would further the interest of the village.
Or someone else from LISC could come, and, and it's not a conflict that you're a member.
That was my next question. So it doesn't, it doesn't prevent me from becoming a member of that group-
Right.
But it prevents me from coming before the board for a year saying-
Absolutely.
Can you please supplies with X amount of funds?
That's right. And it's, and it's, it's all about appearances. It's not because there's anything nefarious going on, it's just because of the appearance that appears.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, okay. So that brings us to, uh, we skipped forty-one dash eleven.
Right.
Forty-one dash eleven is the most aspirational of provisions in this code. It, it says that an independent contractor, uh, can't exert, can't seek to exert undue influence or obtain an undue preference on behalf of another client. So for example, if you hire an engineering firm, and you're meeting with the engineering firm, they should not be, uh, in, attempting to influence you on behalf of another client. That would be, uh, that would be abusing the, the access that they have to you by virtue of their contractual relationship with the village. And the reason I say it's aspirational is because it's a tough, if it's, it's a tough one to enforce. It's a tough one to detect. It's a tough, tough one to enforce, but it's there to send a message.
Mm-hmm. Not that tough.
Okay. Okay. There's a new sheriff in town. Okay. So, um, use of village resources, uh, you know, making personal or unauthorized use of village resources can range from, you know, petty to very serious. Uh, people actually are, are occasionally taken out in handcuffs for, uh, for violating that, you know, it, it, in, uh, at its worst, it's larceny. And that applies even to intangible village resources like compensated time. The occasional and incidental use of village telephones for, uh, or computers for necessary personal non-business matters such as family care and changes in work scheduling, that's permitted. If it's provided to the village officer or employee as a part of his or her compensation, that's permitted. For example, you get a village vehicle, and you drive it home. You're allowed to. It's part of your, it's part of your employment arrangement. No village officer or employee shall cause the village to spend more than is reasonably necessary for transportation, meals, or lodging in connection with official travel. So no first-class airfare.
How about a reverse situat-, kind of a reverse situation? We have partners in the village, people who, groups, organizations, that we work on, work closely with on certain things. People from those organizations trying to call village employees, asking for the use of village resources or directing them to do something.
Well, um, the village officers and employees should know what their role and responsible roles are, and what their responsibilities are, and what the limits of their authority are, and they should know how to deal with a request that, that comes in for them to do something that's outside the scope of their authority. I'm not sure if that answers the question, but, uh-
So it, it's more of an education on our side?
I think so. I think so. I mean, you can't prohibit the public from asking.
Right.
And you can't expect the public to be as sensitive to nuances of all of this as the officers and employees of the village ought to be. As, you know, as we discussed, adopting this code is step one. Producing a booklet, providing training, uh, populating Board of Ethics, having the Board of Ethics adopt certain rules and regulations and procedures, that's all part of establishing the ethics program. Nepotism. No village officer or employee, either individually or as a member of a board or commission, shall participate in any decision to appoint, hire, promote, discipline, or discharge a relative or a member of his or her household. And you also may not directly supervise a relative or member of the household. And the reason we use the word directly there is because, uh, if you're the department head, and you have a deputy department head, and you recuse yourself from anything having to do with the employment of a relative, and you actually can effectively recuse yourself, then that should be okay.
The, um, the word participate in forty-one, fourteen, A-
Right.
Is that, I know that that, that's a, a broad word. Is there ever, you know, I've, I've saw in another code, um, you know, they would say influence, promote, advocate, uh, just have more, more definition for, uh, to say what, what involves participating in any decision?
I guess we should, what we could do, maybe that would satisfy your concern, is say, uh, directly or indirectly participate.
Okay. Very good.
Can, can we go back to forty-one, thirteen? Just stuck on it for a second, because we're going through a lot of, uh, policy discussions about, um, facilities use-
Yeah.
And, um, facilities use agreement requests from community members, not, you know, people in the village, not in the village, outside the village, uh, not-for-profit organizations, and, and that kind of thing. And I don't know if this section refers to such discussions and policy, but I wonder if it does. So, um, village resources shall be used only for authorized village purposes.
Mm-hmm.
For example, the tree committee meets, uses, uh, the conference room in Village Hall, all good.
Right.
Right? Definitely village purposes, authorized village purposes. An external group wants to come in and use village resource without, um, you know, and it, without completing the requisite permit-
Process.
Or facilities use agreement. Is that technically authorizing, um-
I mean, it could be. It could be. I think that, um, first of all, the village, I think it's a legitimate, uh, village purpose to promote, uh, uh, community activities, to promote the good things that various organizations do in the community. I, I think that could be a legitimate governmental purpose of the village. However, a couple of, a couple of things to consider. Number one is you need to treat similarly situated groups similarly.
Sure.
So if you allow this group, are you going to also allow that?
Tend to arises, you might agree with that group, and the other group you might not agree with, and-
Right. So it does lead to those sorts of, of issues.
Or you have a friend in one group, and you don't have a friend in another group.
Right.
So, so a policy that sort of offers definition perhaps of, you know, um, five oh one C three, or, or, you know, state-organized nonprofits versus, you know, like, like that-
Well, but here again, you know, if you try to put too much definition in a law, you limit yourself. You tie your own hands. And there may be very good reason to allow some group that isn't organized in that formal way to use the village. You know, again, you know, the, the village anniversary celebration committee, um, is that, that, that's not codified in the village code. There's no formality to the existence of that committee.
Well, was it resolved that they would come together and, uh, make this effort?
I don't think so.
So, so, you know, there are certain legitimate things that you might want to be free to do. The other thing I was going to say is, um, the village use agreement, there are certain things that the village should be protected against. I don't know if this village is insured, or whether it's self-insured, but if someone's going to use a village facility, you might want to have them sign a release.
Mm-hmm.
There may be certain other conditions that you may want to require. You might want them to obtain, you know, if they're having some event and using village, village facilities, you might want to require them to obtain a, some sort of special insurance policy, uh, which are available. You may want them to consult with either the village police department or the village fire department, depending upon what kind of activity it is. Uh, you know, some groups want to shoot up fireworks and get a permit to do it in a village park, and you might want to insist that they, uh, first get the approval of the fire department, for example. They might want to have a, a marathon, or a bicycle, uh, race, or, or some, you know, foot, some activity in the village streets, and you might want them to consult with the police department to determine what kind of limitations might be appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, use agreements are, are a good thing. I would think that that's something you might want to do.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole, like, policy discussion that-
Yeah. Plus, the municipal law basically prevents us from giving away village resources, doesn't it?
It's actually not the village law.
It's the state-
It's the state constitution.
Yes.
It's the state constitution makes it unconstitutional to give a gift or a loan of village, uh, resources. But I don't think it's a gift or a loan of village resources to allow some good community group that's doing some good in the village to have access to village facilities, provided that you're not discriminatory about the way you permit those facilities to be used.
And it's fiscally responsible? Because that's, you know, the, our, the village resources require a lot of investment in-
Well, that's certainly something to weigh. That's something to weigh in your judgment about whether to allow these things in general, or allow certain ones in particular.
Thanks.
Yep.
I made it perfectly clear, right?
Giving advice, giving advice is much easier than making decisions. Okay. Political solicitations. Essentially, you can't coerce a subordinate into engaging in political activities or making political contributions. You can't make personnel decisions based upon political activities or, uh, or, or expenditures.
Hmm.
And that, though, that appears in the labor law, it appears in, in the election law, uh, you know, civil service law. There, there are a variety of, of statutes that'll provide that same thing, but they're, they're incorporated here so that, again, we have one-stop shopping. Confidential information, you've heard me say that it's more, a much more limited concept in government than it is in the private sector. You know, we don't have intellectual property, we don't have, um, proprietary, uh, information, but there are lim-, there, there are limited categories of, uh, information that the, uh, village has the authority to withhold from the public. In some other codes of ethics, what, what you see here at forty-one dash sixteen is the same vague, unhelpful rule that appeal, appears in Article eighteen of the general municipal law. In some other codes, I have introduced a definition of confidential information, and here's how I define it in those codes in which I do. You know, Article eighteen doesn't do us the favor, excuse me, of telling us what confidential information is in a government context. So here's how I would define it, if you wished me to add this. Two prongs, two types of confidential information. One, information that is prohibited from disclosure by either federal or state law, of which there are various categories, like HIPAA, you know, the attorney-client privilege, uh, certain information about schoolchildren and other such things. Second prong, information that either the Freedom of Information Law or the Open Meetings Law allows the village in the exercise of its discretion to withhold, and which the village has lawfully exercised the discretion to withhold. If you've determined to withhold something from public disclosure in a lawful, and that determination is lawful, then in my view, it's, it's an ethics violation to, uh, to disclose it.
Sure.
So, you know, if you want me to add that definition, I can certainly do that.
So- How do I phrase this?
My question is, do we determine what is foilable, or is that-
State law starts with a presumption that everything is, except anything that is specifically exempt, or that you have the discretion to withhold and have withheld, uh, lawfully. You know, there are various categories, like, um, oh, you know, if, a record that, uh, would result in an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy if released. The village has the discretion to withhold that, but that exercise of discretion is subject to judicial review, and sometimes villagers get it wrong. But if you've exercised that discretion and you got it right, then I think it's an ethics violation to disclose it.
And you have the opportunity to redact in those circumstances as well.
Yes, yes.
So where information is, is brought into a situation of a public meeting, a public work session, public hearing, does the village have discretion over the documents that are supportive in those public meetings?
Well, again-
Supportive documentation?
The village cannot override foil. Foil starts with a presumption that all village records are, uh, are subject to public inspection and copying unless specifically exempt, or within certain very limited categories that the village has given the discretion to withhold. So if it falls within those limited categories, the village can, in its discretion, withhold that.
In a situation, if, if someone presented a comment to, as part of the public hearing in writing-
Right.
Is there-
That would be foilable.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent. It's part of the, it's part of the record. The, the public, it's part of the record of a public hearing. That word "public" before the word "hearing," you know, says, says it all.
Okay.
Okay. Or else the board is making a secret, you know, a determination based on secret information.
Or someone is.
Or someone is, yeah, yeah. Okay. So, do you want me to add a definition of confidential information to this, uh, section?
I think it would be helpful.
Okay. 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 So gifts, tips, and favors. A, one through three, is just a reiteration of the vague standard that appears in Article eighteen. And the reason I've incorporated it is because Article eighteen applies in the village. But that vague standard is you may not seek, you may not request a gift of any amount, or accept a gift having a value of seventy-five dollars or more, under circumstances where it would appear, appear, that the gift was intended to influence or reward an official act. That's vague because it doesn't really tell us, uh, with clarity, what kind of gifts are prohibited. So we add, uh, B and C. B says, uh, you can't solicit or accept a gift, uh, and there's no threshold, no, no dollar threshold, from a person who you know has, uh, or have, or have reason to know, has received or sought a financial benefit from the village within the past, uh, year. So if you know that the person has received a financial benefit from the village in the, uh, past year, you can either request the gift nor accept it.
Could you also, like in other sections of this code, make that forward-looking as well? So if, if, uh, an officer knows that someone intends to, to do business with the village, they, they may not accept a gift?
Yeah, um- That's, um, if you know that they intend to-
So I think I, I have a note of my own here, that, uh, it might be in the New York City Ethics Code, um, or that the officer or employee knows, uh, knows is or intends to become engaged with business dealings. So, you know, elsewhere in-
Can you prove that?
Well, it, maybe an email, a tech, you know, it would be the, again, we don't want to put anything unenforceable in here, but, um, if it's, if it comes to light, and then you can, you know, foil emails or whatever it is.
I'll, I'll certainly take a look at the, um, city, city code, I'll see if I can find that provision.
How do you determine intent?
Yeah, that's, that's-
Well, I think it would be, you know, it would be the kind of case where, you know, there's emails back, but there's not a contract yet, but it's, you know, hey, we're thinking about submitting, uh, you know, to, for the RFP that the village just put out, and-
That would probably violate the language that we incorporated from Article eighteen, that you can't accept a gift under circumstances where it would appear that the gift was intended to influence an official act.
Right. And the, and in section A, I mean, I, I understand the clar-, like, the intent to clarify with one, two, and three.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, would it ever read just, just A, um, without, without the one, two, and there, you just, you may not accept or receive a gift or other benefit, uh, from the same donor within a twelve-month period, having an aggregate value of seventy-five dollars, full stop? So that, you know, 'cause it, 'cause the, then, I feel like it, it does leave a lot of openness to the reasonably appear- So that, you know, because the, then, I feel like it does leave a lot of openness to the reasonably appear...
You see, I think, I think that would be a harsh rule. You know, we're adding that you can't accept a gift from someone you know has received or sought a financial benefit within the past year. And you can't accept a gift or the benefit for having engaged in official conduct, which you were required to engage in. And then A, with the one, two, and three, is accepting a gift under circumstances where it would appear that it was intended to influence you. So I think we're kind of covering all bases with the three, with all those three provisions taken together. I mean, if you know somebody and they want to take you out to lunch and you're not the person before whom their application is pending, is that, you really want to prohibit that? You know...
It's an expensive lunch.
People become friends, they give each other gifts. I just, you know, the federal government has a zero tolerance rule for gifts. I just wonder if that's necessary. And when, you know, what I try to think about is, what is the evil that I'm trying to protect against? The evil is gifts given that would appear, that would cause the public to think that they were intended to influence me, gifts that I receive from someone who's actually been doing business with the village, or gifts that are given to me as a reward for an official act.
Sure. Again, I look at this through the eyes of, you know, a Parks employee or, you know, a board, you know, a planning board member who's reading this and reads, you know, would reasonably appear, and, you know, of course, they have the authority to go to an ethics board and say, oh, you know, can I do this? But making something just very cut and dry, I know in E, in forty-one seventeen E, it addresses a lot of the specificity there. So, you know, to the point of people become friends and they, you know, take each other out to lunch, you know, a person with a family or personal relationship.
But A is the, I agree that A has some vagueness to it. That's directly from the state law. And the reason that we have B and C is to try and accomplish exactly what you're speaking about, which is try to sup, which is to supplement the state law by adding rules with more clarity, tighter and clearer rules. And B is the one that says you can't request a gift or accept a gift from someone that you know has received a financial benefit or sought a financial benefit from the village within the past year. And C is you can't accept a gift that's given as a reward for having done your job.
Right.
So I think, you know, if you take all three together, it kind of covers the bases. Unless there's something you think that we've omitted.
No, I went through this with the, sort of the eye for taking out any of that wiggle room for folks, not because I think people are going to try to be moving in the margins, but rather so someone can read this and say, okay, you know, full stop. You know, and that if something does go to an ethics board, that ethics board can look at our code and say, you know, okay, you know, yes, that falls under, you know, E two, or that falls under, you know...
Right. It's hard to draft a law that specifically and precisely addresses every factual scenario that could come up.
Sure.
And that's, you know, wiggle room can be a bad thing and can also sometimes be a good thing because it can make the law adaptable to the facts that are presented through interpretation by the Board of Ethics.
I sometimes look at this stuff like you're codifying common sense. I've been in government a long time, in and out, and I find that a lot of it is just common sense. If, and I know that some people don't exercise that common sense sometimes, but basically, if you don't think you should be doing it, don't do it. If you have a question, ask. And I think that would solve a lot of problems.
I was once at a program where someone, an old timer in the back of the room stood up and said, what do we need all these rules for? Why can't we just use our common sense and do the right thing? And a colleague of mine answered, and I sort of echoed that in one of the things I wrote prior to this meeting, that if that were, if we were to take that approach, all we would need is the Ten Commandments.
Correct.
But, I don't know, if there's something, I don't want to dismiss your comment. I want to take it very seriously, and if there's a way of improving this, I want to do it. So if you're still uncomfortable with this...
No, and I appreciate them, I'm sharing my notes. I don't know if anyone else on the board, you know, has a reflection on that.
Are you significantly uncomfortable with it? Or do you think it can, so as we continue, so this is in, we're supposed to, we're supposed to review this code, what, every, annually? Was that your recommendation?
I think annually is probably more often, it's not the only business before the village, needless to say. But I think, you know, from time to time, regularly from time to time, it's a good thing to do. And the Board of Ethics should be doing that also and have comments and recommendations based upon their experience in implementing it.
So is a public hearing required for every tweak and twist?
Yes, if you're mending a local law, yes.
Okay.
That's the, it's named for that rule. That you have, you can, you have to change something with the same degree of formality with which it was first adopted.
And so if codes, in the code book, the village code book were changed without public hearings, that nullify those changes?
Yes.
Okay. A quick question about...
Well, actually, let me, let me, let me change my answer.
Okay.
If they were...
Noted.
There is a statute of limitations for challenging the adoption of a local law. So if you move to ask a court to invalidate a law because it wasn't properly adopted, you must do so within the applicable statute of limitations.
Okay. Rebecca, have you been, your question satisfied on that one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So number seven and eight, under fourteen seventeen. And this is very specific because...
This is fourteen seventeen E?
Okay, yeah. Just let me say, Mayor, before you go, that E are exceptions. These are gifts that you're permitted to accept.
Yeah.
And they come from the New York Lobbying Act. They are exceptions that are in the New York Lobbying Act. That's where these came from.
So I, seven and eight, because there are situations where the mayor will be asked to marry someone.
Right.
And...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke a second ago. One through six are from the Lobbying Act, seven and eight are from the general municipal law.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this...
Right.
Correctly, or understanding it correctly. So you, a person who is, has, who is serving in a capacity listed in Section eleven of Domestic Relations Law for the solemnization of a marriage by the officer or employee at a place other than his or her normal public place of business or at a time other than his or her normal business hours. So that person is permitted to accept a hundred dollars or less for that activity.
Right.
Okay. And what's the difference then with number seven and number eight, seventy-five dollars or a hundred dollars?
Eight, municipalities are authorized to designate someone as a marriage officer. And eight is a person who has been designated by the village to be a marriage officer pursuant to Section eleven C of the Domestic Relations Law.
As long as they're serving without salary or wage?
Right.
Okay. So we could, I could appoint...
You could appoint Sylvia.
Mr. Adams.
Sure.
I could appoint Mr. Adams as a domestic officer, solemnization.
I haven't looked at eleven C of the Domestic Relations Law in a while. I would want to refresh my...
And you're married, and you're married.
You're married.
I'm a village judge, by the way. So I am authorized under Section eleven as a person who can perform wedding ceremonies. And I often say that it's the only life sentence that I can impose as a village judge.
Okay. Satisfied.
Why the difference between a hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Go figure.
Okay.
Municipal law.
Right, right. And finally, just to be clear, contributions made in accordance with the federal or state election law are not gifts. They're not regulated gifts.
Yes.
They are a different species of animal.
And just to clarify on that, with the Section forty-one fifteen political solicitations, one may not solicit, but one does not need to, if the donation was not solicited, one does not need to refund. So say a trustee is running, you know, for reelection and somebody on a, on a planning board donates to that trustee, but the trustee didn't email or ask or anything, you know, they just sent a check.
What we're really trying to prevent is coercive solicitation, yeah. If it's voluntarily done, I mean, people do it all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Clearly, yes.
Just wanted to...
Yes, you're absolutely right. Okay. And inducement of others is a violation in itself. You know, inducing somebody else to violate the code is a violation of the code. Then there are three types of disclosure that are required by the village code.
Just before we go on to disclosure, is, something I saw somewhere else as well, is the possibility to add text requiring an affirmative obligation for officers and employees to report misconduct and suspected violations?
We did not add that, or I did not add that when I drafted the code. And I can tell you my personal opinion about that. I think that that is a bad thing for morale. It's unfair to employees. If I learn through gossip in a, driving to work in a carpool, that some other employee is violating the code and I can't bring myself to turn in a friend or coworker, I don't think I should be turned, I don't think, I don't want, you don't want to turn honest people into lawbreakers because they've learned something that they haven't, that they don't feel comfortable disclosing.
I, yeah, I understand, and when I read that, I thought of exactly, you know, what you're describing. And then part of me thought of the flip side of, what if someone, you know, really doesn't, doesn't want to turn in their buddy, but in the interest of the village, in the interest of the public, the village should know that information, that there is an ethics code violation. And, you know, are we talking about, you know, someone who's bought a seventy-six dollar lunch, you know? Or, you know, is it, hey, you know, on the weekends, they haven't noticed, I used the truck to, you know, move my son-in-law? You know, it's...
The law does not impose an obligation, legal obligation, on you or me to report a crime committed by another person. If you see, if you see them murder somebody, murder, you have no legal obligation to call the police.
I didn't know that. Good to know.
And so...
Oh, you're planning something later?
So I don't, I don't think that, you know, viewed in those terms, yeah, arguably, it could be a good thing for the village to require people to come forward, but then, at the same time, there's a downside as well. And for me, the balance is against it.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, I just thought that was interesting to...
I need to go back to forty-one sixteen for a second.
Okay.
Just to see if there's a remedy for... Let's say we notice something in village business in which information was withheld from public, from the public, where it may have been part of a public record. Do we enter it into the public record? Do we re, do we pull it out and put it into the public record?
I would say it depends upon what the facts and circumstances are. How long ago was it? Is the matter still a current matter? Is there any useful purpose to be served?
Let's just, let's just assume the answer to all those questions are yes.
Then sure. You know, it may even be a hearing that you can reopen and notice to the public and, you know, advertise it and reopen the hearing. But I would want to, I would want to consult the law on that. I would speak to the village attorney about whether that, whether the window is closed or the hearing can be reopened. Okay. Three types of disclosure. Particular matter disclosure, in other words, when you recuse yourself, when you actually have a conflict of interest and recuse yourself. Recusal is always coupled with a disclosure. And disclosure of interests in village contracts, actually, I said three types, there are four types. Disclosure of interest in village contracts, that's required by the general municipal law, and that applies to any village officer or employee, whether or not they're in a position to approve the contract. If they have an interest in a village contract, it must be disclosed. Applicant disclosure in land use applications also required by the general municipal law. The applicant in a land use application must disclose the identity of any state or local officer or employee who has an interest in the applicant. And that question appears in your procurement, in your land use applications. And annual financial disclosure. So here are the people who are required to file annual statements of financial disclosure. And I should say that this is entirely discretionary with you because state law requires municipalities with populations in excess of fifty thousand to have a financial disclosure law. So this village, having a population of less than fifty thousand, is not required by law to have this feature, but can, of course, have it if it wishes. So we, in this law, have identified the following four categories of people required to file disclosure statements. Elected village officials, department heads, deputy department heads, and division heads, village inspectors, and officers or employees holding policymaking positions. And the term policymaking positions is defined. And it's defined by criteria that were developed by the Temporary State Commission on Local Government Ethics, which was created by the law that imposed a requirement to financial disclosure. That Temporary State Commission sunset out of existence years ago. But before it did, it developed these criteria. And the criteria include such things as the position permits meaningful input into the governmental decision-making process, the powers and duties are broadly defined, and require more than the exercise of simple ministerial competence, control over other officers or employees, the position involves establishing priorities or the development of programs... the position involves establishing priorities or the development of programs, uh, conducts of studies, preparation of budgets, um, whether the person is authorized to speak on behalf of local elected officials or other policymakers, whether the position entails frequent contact with local elected officials or their principal deputies. Those are the criteria developed by the Temporary State Commission. And then the form of the statement is described. The statements are due, uh, on May fifteenth of each year. And then there's the process by which the statements are prepared and, and sent out annually and reviewed by the Board of Ethics.
How do these relate to the statements that we, uh, we all fill out annually, um, for like, I think Kullen and Donowski sent them out?
For the auditors, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's to satisfy the auditors. That really is, I, I'd be happy to look at one, but, uh, this is based on, on the financial disclosure law, uh, that appears in the general municipal law.
It's so basic.
Sure.
It's extremely basic.
Yeah, they're, they're very basic, so I just didn't know the, the relationship
Right.
Between them.
The, those questionnaires that they ask you to fill out are for, is to satisfy their obligations as an auditor.
Okay.
This is an obligation of the officer or employee to disclose.
Got it.
And the purpose, you know, the purpose of financial disclosure by officers and employees are twofold. You know, there's this crazy idea around, uh, in government circles that somehow, uh, there's, um, it's, there's a moral problem with accumulating wealth. And we want to see financial disclosure statements to determine whether our, uh, elected officials and appointed officials are accumulating wealth. That is not what it's about, at all. It's about two things. It's about, uh, providing a check on the recusals that are being made during the year. And it's about reminding officers and employees on an annual basis of where their conflicts might lie. So it serves those two purposes. And that's why I think to judge the legitimacy of a disclosure requirement, in my view, is that the legitimate, the legitimacy of a disclosure requirement can be measured by how closely it relates to what your obligations are under the Code of Ethics. So, I want to know what, uh, what land and re- what real property is owned by officers and employees of the village within the village. But I could not care less if you own property in Hawaii or California or, you know, a chateau in the south of France, that's your business. Doesn't relate to your official duties. So that's what, that's what this financial disclosure is about, and the, uh, there's a form of disclosure that's made a part of this law. So in order to change the form in the future, it would require, uh, action by the Board of Trustees.
Are we going to go over that?
Well, I'd be happy to. The powers and duties of the Board of Ethics are set forth in, well, the establishment of the Board of Ethics is set forth in forty-one dash twenty-three, and I think we had a comment, uh, previously, it might have been from you, that
Yeah.
perhaps we can clarify that, it says that the appointments are made by the Board of Trustees. I'd be, you know, we can change that to, uh, nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the Board of Trustees.
The Board of Trustees, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
So we're, we're diving into, uh, four, article four?
Y- yes.
I just, um, in, in, again, uh, doing a lot of research online and, uh, seeing what other options are, are out there, um, because we, the whole purpose of this is, is to want public confidence in, uh, the actions of employees, officers, and elected officials, um, and also, you know, with a Board of Ethics, to be sure that there's confidence in the decisions made by those, those board members. And so, uh, being, you know, a smaller municipality, I just wanted to see like, what else are, are, are options here? Um, and came across the, uh, state law, um, that, in New York, that, that, uh, section eight oh eight, that says that if, um, that a municipality may create its own Board of Ethics, but, um, if it, if a town or village level does not, um, it has the option of, uh, referring and using the Board of Ethics of the county, um, and, and forming that relationship.
Actually, what A O A says is that if a local municipality like the village does not have a Board of Ethics, then the county board is their board.
Right.
The discretionary thing is if they, if they have, uh, a Board of Ethics, they may still request assistance from the, uh, from the board, but then it would have to be through that mechanism of a request.
Sure, so, so in effect, we, we have a Board of Ethics.
If, if you want to view it that way, sure, um, I-
I can tell you, dealing with the county, not so sure you have anyone who would want to look at village-
I can, I can tell you, I can tell you from the experience of representing county ethics boards that they're not going to care very much about
Right.
the problems of this village.
Well, it's, I-
But would they be required to?
They would be requi- they would be required to, sure. If you have no Board of Ethics and a complaint comes in from someone in this village, they would, they would act upon it.
I can tell you that I work for the community college, we're part of the government, they won't even look at us. If the college had to form its own with outside counsel.
Well, I, I'd be curi- I, I, um, yeah, I, I was surprised to read this. I, uh, called the executive director of the Southern County Board of Ethics, Jessica Hogan.
I know Jessica.
Yeah, and had a, had a great conversation, and she, she kind of chuckled and said, well, yeah, you're, you're right. And she said, there's, you know, right now, they, they don't have that relationship with any, any villages, but, uh, you know, would be open to having a conversation about what that might look like. So, you know, for, and, and, uh, from a, a, you know, fiscally responsible standpoint, I don't know, you know, if that's a free service for the village, or if that's, uh, you know, something that the village would have to contribute towards.
There's no, there's no, uh, authority in the law for the county to require payment from the village.
Right.
But I don't know why the village would want to surrender control of its own ethics program.
It's home rule versus
Yeah.
Republican Democrat kind of appointments, so-
That's, that's true, the, the county is more political than the village, if that matters, and, uh, but more, but more to my point, that
They have a conflict.
That you-
Initially, in- instantly.
Instantly, they have a conflict. The chair is the father of one of our, uh, planning board members.
The chair is the father.
The chair of the county ethics.
It would be instant refusal.
In a matter of-
Potentially, yes, and I don't mean to imply, say anything, I, I have great respect for both.
But I would think, I would think, if I were a trustee of a village, I'm not, so it's not my decision, it's your decision. I recognize that, of course. But if I were a trustee, I would want to choose, I would want to participate in choosing the people who are going to implement this program, who are going to make the decisions, uh, for this program, and, and who are going to carry out all the functions, all the very important functions that the code, uh, imposes, uh, upon the Board of Ethics. I wouldn't want, you know, the county executive and the members of that legislative body to be the ones who chose who was interpreting the code that you adopted.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge, it's a double-edged sword. I think, you know, for, uh, you know, concern is that in such a small village, it's difficult for individuals to not have conflicts, personal conflicts of interest in one way or another, because we're such a beautifully tight-knit community that having, uh, you know, selecting, you know, even our, our most upstanding residents, it's, it's difficult for, you know, in my perception, to have that public confidence that those individuals might not, um, you know, be, be making a decision one way or another based on a personal relationship. So there's the, the benefit of sending, uh, decisions to a board where, uh, you know, notwithstanding the, you know, the current members and, and having personal conflicts of interest, uh, potentially there with, with, uh, one's son being involved, um, that these people aren't likely to know the, the employees or the elected officials or the, you know, uh, board members who are, uh, you know, whose, whose questions or, or issues are coming before them. And so there's that anonymity that gives the, the fresh eye as opposed to the personal knowing of others.
What, what is it about, you see, the way I imagine this process playing out is this board will appoint members to this village's Board of Ethics in whom they have confidence. You have no basis for having confidence in the people who have been appointed by others to a board, uh, to a county board that has no direct connection to the village. You don't know whether they are, uh, wonderful, conscientious, intelligent, objective people on the one hand, political hacks on the other. You just don't have a basis for having, uh, you know, a confidence level other than to assume that if they were appointed by the county, they must be, there must be something good about that.
Well, these are all, uh, everything in, in, these are subjective, in a sense. I, for me, I'm, I'm very interested in looking, again, from, you know, this philosophical point that we're, we're speaking about, but also from a fiscally responsible standpoint, uh, because-
Nobody's being paid.
Sorry?
Nobody's being paid.
Right.
No, for, for, for the, in, in our ethics, uh, the proposed ethics board, we, there'd be an ethics attorney who would oversee, right?
Yeah, they're uncompensated, though. The members are uncompensated.
The members are uncompensated, but there's an attorney that the village pays.
Who's?
Uh, who, right, who's-
We're working with right now and dropping up the hours.
Yeah, I can assure you that we'll not be a crushingly, uh, um, ex- uh, crushing financial-
We've spent money on a lot of things, the one thing that I will give a pass to is ethics.
And I'm not suggesting that we do not move forward with figuring out a, a, uh, method. Just for me, uh, I would appreciate the board having a conversation and seeing what that would look like and if the board ultimately determines that, that the county relationship is not viable for any num- you know, any reason, then, you know, we've-
So, so we're celebrating an anniversary of incorporation a week from today. It's because the village residents wanted to establish home rule.
Sure.
Un- un- just not connected to any political party, any national politi- political committee or party, and to be able to make decisions on behalf of the residents independently of the town, which is even closer knit, right?
Sure.
So, w- we are utilizing, I think, in, in selecting a, um, Board of Ethics that represents the village, we would be utilizing, uh, representatives who, you know, based on whoever they may be. Uh, we have a lot of people who have put their name in the hat, and we've invited, we invited to list, to listen to and/or attend the, um, the actual public hearing. People who are representative of ethics, uh, the, the purpose and, and provisions of ethics in their capacities and employment or elsewhere outside of the village and can bring, can bring this expertise to this. And if, if, if you, if there is a, a reason to doubt an individual and their, uh, ability to remain, um, uh, objective when, when talking through ethics matters, they don't belong in a bo- like, they, this is, the, the world is filled with ethics experts and people who have an interest or an education or philosophies that are ethical.
You, you-
We have to trust that, that, who we select.
They've taken off.
That's true, you do have to trust, you have to use your judgment, appoint people you trust. But I also will say, you have to be extremely careful who you appoint to this board. There are boards that are, there are people who are appointed to these boards who are in a holy war and want trophies, they want heads mounted on, on the wall of their, their conference room. There are, and won't, aren't satisfied unless they find somebody. Uh, there are, uh, those who, uh, wouldn't see an ethics violation if they tripped over it. There are people who feel, you know, there, there are all kinds of wrong me- ethics board members. And I, I think you want to exercise the care and the judgment in deciding who's going to serve this important function. I just, you know-
And I, I'm not, uh, saying that that's definitely not an option. I'm just thinking that while we have, uh, while we're looking at all this, while it's still all open, I, as a board member, would be curious for that conversation.
I mean, shouldn't we do our due diligence and at least reach out to them?
I can tell you that they've rendered decisions that were, um, very good, and then they, in my view, succumb to political pressure and reverse their decisions.
But I, I, again, I feel like there's a lot of subject, I, I'm very curious to just have a conversation with, and I, Drew, I, I respect your, your, your vast, um, experiences in, in this, and I'm not dismissing them at all.
None, no offense taken.
You know, it's, it's the, I, I just feel responsible for, uh, seeing that this is a possible path. And again, if we explore this, and for any number of reasons, we all say, or the majority of us say, you know what, this isn't, uh, this isn't the way that the village wants to go, because we want to stay with home rule, because we think it's not as reliable, um, you know, that, then, then that, that is what it is, but I just-
So we'd end up, so we'd end up spending additional funds. If, if, if we have a, a Board of Ethics, maybe we don't have to go to our ethics attorney so often, right? We have guidance from the board.
Right, but wouldn't we have that guidance from the board, no matter be it a county board or a town board? I mean, would, would, would there be any harm in reaching out to the county?
I have no knowledge of, of this county board's-
I can tell you right now, I like the path we're going down, I'm totally against that. I'm totally against going to the county.
No offense to, to them.
No offense.
But this is a- our opportunity to have an impact on, you know, who becomes part of that board.
My prob-
Public comment is still open until December seventh.
Can I just utter one sentence?
I, I have a little, a little problem with the fact that we, sitting here, have so many questions about a Code of Ethics. How do we ensure that the people who, they haven't been in this workshop, how do they become the judge
Well, yeah.
on a Board of Ethics?
Two, two answers. First, they're going to be trained, they're going to be trained by me. And second, they're going to have counsel. When they meet, I will be present. When they utter, when they issue decisions, those decisions will be drafted by me. That's the way it works in every municipality that I represent. County of Westchester, County of Nassau, Town of Hempstead, Town of Oyster Bay, Town of Huntington, Town of Southampton, Village of Sag Harbor, and until recently, the Village of Southampton. That's the way it works. They get trained just like everybody else, and they have counsel.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, and just like our civil or criminal system, you sit on a jury, you're not a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, the lawyers present their case, the judge and the, presents the law, and within those parameters, that jury must decide on the evidence presented and the law as it stands. That's exactly what this committee would do.
And that's exactly what the county committee would do as well.
The jury determines innocence or guilt.
Right, and, and in that, in that-
The judge sets the penalty.
Well, no, but the, but the judge instructs the jury
Yeah.
about how to go about making their decision
Right.
and what they may or may not consider.
But the, and in, in that, uh, example too, the jury, if a juror, a potential juror is called up and says, I know that person, they must, they cannot be a juror for that case, because they have some personal relationship or, or knowledge of, of that person. So they're deemed to be someone who might not be, you know, impartial in one, one way or the other.
There's no municipality that I represent that is, but, whose Board of Ethics has been unable to function because of excessive recusals. unable to function because of excessive recusals. Uh, mostly, mostly, the board is giving ethics advice to officers and employees who are seeking advice. Investigations of complaints are a much less frequent affair, and most of the ethics complaints that are received by the Board of Ethics are submitted by people who don't understand what we mean by ethics. Uh, Town of Southampton, uh, Board of Ethics received a complaint from someone who said, I went to the town recycling center and the employee who works there was rude to me. Uh, in Oyster Bay, uh, they, the Board of Ethics received a complaint, my next door neighbor has illegal tenants and the code enforcement department hasn't done anything about it. Uh, you know, all these, you know, I can go on. You know, I was pulled over by a police officer, but all the other cars were going, doing the same thing I was doing. Um, these things, all, some of them could potentially be problems, but they're, none of them are ethics problems. And so, most of the responses to ethics complaints are, thank you very much, uh, you know, we referred your complaint to the appropriate department, it's not an ethics violation, something like that. Um, on, on, on those rare occasions when there's a, a genuine complaint, which if proved would constitute an ethics violation, then there are procedures and due process attaches and, and, you know, testimony can be taken and, uh, and the board requires assistance of counsel to do all of that. And so, it, you know, it's, this is not as large a, not as populous a municipality as the County of Suffolk, but I think you can find five members to serve on a Board of Ethics that are diverse, that live, that have perhaps geographical diversity, perhaps, um, uh, you know, other types of diversity and won't all know the same people. And if one recuses himself or herself in a particular matter, you'll have, you'll still have a quorum able to function. I just don't see it as a, as a, a problem that typically arises. Um, so.
Just one simple sentence. I believe the essence or the spirit of incorporation is self-determination.
Would you also submit your comment to the clerk, so it's part of the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, again, I, I will speak for myself. I feel compelled to explore this and, and might come around to agreeing, because that is not a viable path in one way or another. Um, but I-
What, what would you do in order to explore it? What, what explor- exploration would be helpful to you in making the decision? The Suffolk County Board of Ethics exists. The law provides that if this village doesn't have a Board of Ethics, the county board is its board. You, this village can avail itself of that resource if it wishes to. What else is there to explore?
With, with or without a Board of Ethics?
Without a Board of Ethics. If it chooses not to have a Board of Ethics, it can avail itself of that.
I'd, I'd be curious for, you know, Jessica was very open to, uh, you know, she, she sort of laughed and said, well, don't pass anything that, you know, re- requires us, because we don't know what that looks like yet, but, you know, I'm happy to, to talk about that further. So, a Board-
Should, should we reach out to her and, and ask her to come in?
As an employee of the county?
Uh, yeah.
As a county employee?
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, so just, uh, for me, I'm, I'm curious to learn more. And again, I'm not saying that, uh, that's definitely the way I want to go, but not knowing what that might look like, I don't feel that it's responsible to, to ignore that potential.
So, we have been availed of the services of the Suffolk County Board of Ethics for many, many years.
But I don't know that the village knew it.
I don't know. The village knows about it.
Oh, I knew about it.
Okay.
The Suffolk County Board of Ethics is, is the, would have been, is the village's resource for, uh, reporting an ethical concern. I guess you could go to the state as well if you wanted to.
Well, not to the state ethic, not to the, uh, entity that, that the state commission-
JCO, like the Joint Committee, the Formal Law Commission on Public Eth-
No, not to that. You could try to interest the Attorney General-
Right.
-or the Comptroller in issuing an opinion, if you were successful in getting one, uh, but, but not the, not the commission.
And so, we, we've requested the, the Comptroller to take a look at our, um, financial and, and operational, um, processes, uh, it, on basically day one of the new administration. And, um, it takes two years to get the State Comptroller in to look at, at, at these things.
Right, and there's no state agency that will be available on an ongoing basis to answer these inquiries and investigate these complaints as they arise?
Mm-hmm.
I can speak for myself. I'm not aware of any, uh, people who came forward with concerns about ethics. Uh, I've been on the board eight and a half years.
Right. You know, in, in my view, in, in a municipality where no one has asked for ethics advice or raised an ethics question, it isn't because they aren't encountering ethics issues day in and day out. It's because they're not recognizing that they are.
I agree with that.
And that's, you see, that's another advantage of having your own ethics board or ethics program. The more proactive the ethics board is in getting the message out, conducting training, posting educational materials on the website, educating the, uh, the, the village workforce, the more people are going to be triggered to ask the questions. And you want to encourage them to come and ask the questions.
I, I really appreciate that we're working on a code that's, uh, you know, obviously there are still always some questions, but the, I really appreciate the clarity that this code is going to provide to everyone here in the village and the co- public confidence it will build. Um, you know, once again, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm definitely for the county route, but I'm definitely for, uh, you know, a conversation between the board and, uh, the county. And even if, in my understanding, uh, if there's a Board of Ethics that the village makes, they could also use that, the county, as a, as a reference and-
They won't, they will, they will brush you off if you have a Board of Ethics. They won't, they won't get involved.
To tell you, getting county's attention, you're going to be spitting in the wind.
I, I called the number on the website and Jessica and I had a great conversation immediately. So, I, I, again, I'm not, I'm just curious about it. And if, if they say, hey, uh, the timeline is going to be where you submit an inquiry and it might take six months or a year, and, and the village says, you know what, that's not-
Did you ask her that?
No, because she said she doesn't, this, this doesn't exist yet. It would be something we'd be exploring together. And so, I, I did not, uh, I didn't want to have further conversation, because I'm, I was, you know, curious for a board conversation.
Jessica is a very nice person, and it won't be six months or a year. She, she would never tell you that it's going to take six months or a year, and it's unlikely that it would take six months or a year. I don't think that's where the problem lies. I think the place where the problem lies is you want to be the architects of your ethics program. You want to appoint people that you have confidence in, that are going to, uh, administer the ethics program in the way that you think is in the best interest of the village. And you don't want to cede that authority to a remote government that makes appointments based on different considerations.
Majority leader, minority leader of the legislature, you know, the presiding officer of the red legislature.
So, it's a mixed politically-
It's all political.
But it's, it's mixed. It's-
Would, and, and I want to continue with the, with the, with, you know, going through Article Four. I have a lot of questions about that. But would, would it hurt the board just to speak to Jessica?
I have no interest in going to the county. I really don't. I have no appetite for it at all.
Okay.
I mean, don't you think it's part of doing our, our homework to, to look at-
I want it to be here with our citizens controlling their government.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's the purpose of, of, of this code. This code did not exist. It does not exist.
There's how many people in this, in this village? Eighty-six hundred?
Eight thousand.
Okay.
Eight, nine thousand.
I can tell you, I was at the village center for the ham and now cookies. I saw one person I knew really close. One.
It was, I guess, serving as trustee for, you know, uh, my second term now. I, you just, you see, you see people, you see faces, you know.
Is that your point? What was your point?
My point is, you can find people who we're, we're not going to know, that other people are not going to know, who are going to take an oath and do their duty to administer the code as it is written, just like you would do if you were a juror, just like you would do, you do as a trustee, just like he does as a lawyer, as our village justice does.
But it's tough, because if you, if you, uh, want, if, the goal is to-
And if they, if they have that-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
If they have that kind of problem, they don't go on the board.
But, but to your point, if, if there's supposed to be people that we, we don't know, how do we have confidence in them if-
How do we have confidence in, may, make an analogy with our, our planning board, our zoning board, our, of appeals, our, uh, architectural review committee, where, in which one member is on both the architectural review committee and the zoning board of appeals. And is, how do we have confidence in any of that, Rebecca? Your, your challenge is to challenge all the boards, committees, and councils. In my, if, from what I'm hearing from you, we have to have full faith and, and trust in the people who live here that want to have, that have the best interests of our community at heart.
I'm not expressing a lack of trust in the people that live here. I'm saying that there's another option that was discovered that has different, uh, fiscal implications for the village.
Has no fiscal implication.
No, it, no, but that, we, I'm not saying that ethics are not worth spending money on, but if, if we go one, the, the route of a local board, then we're budgeting for a certain amount of money to, you know, to hire a, a respected attorney to oversee, uh, the, the ethics board. And so, again, I'm-
I got to tell you, part of why I am so hot on this is because during the last campaign, when an ethics issue was raised, there were people raising, saying, spend money on an ethics opinion? That's crazy. Really? We spent money on, we blew money on certain programs that we, that we voted against during my term. And we're, my head's going to explode.
But again, and I just said, I'm not against investing in the ethical foundation of our village. I'm just curious about what this other path would look like, and, and I am very open-
It's been available to us since forever.
This is very frustrating.
Forever.
I didn't know about it.
And why didn't anyone know about it?
I, I don't know why we didn't know about it.
Good question.
Now, now you're investigating it.
And to his point, to his point-
Because we're bringing it forward.
People think there are not ethical problems because they don't know any better.
And I'm not suggesting that we-
And I, and the reason why, again, I'm hot on this is because when I see what's been going on over the past, name it, years, it's insane that people didn't have the common sense to not know they couldn't do those things. Crazy, crazy. And to me, I'm going to lay it on the line, this looks like it's an attempt to scuttle this initiative.
Excuse me. I, I take offense to that. I've said multiple times that this is something I feel the responsibility to advocate for exploring, and should it prove to not be a viable option after a conversation, I'm very open and want-
Conversation about what?
Excuse me. And want to continue, as trustee Giuliano said, going through this right now, so that the board can have a better understanding of this option as well.
It's definitely a viable option. It is an option that the law provides. Question is not whether it's viable. Question is whether you want to do it. Whether you want to give this role in village government to some, to a county board, or whether you want to select the people who are going to make these judgments for the village from among village residents. That's really the question.
Yeah, and respectfully, I don't feel that I'm informed enough to make that choice, which is why I'm advocating for a conversation.
But I can tell you anything that you want to know. I, I was counsel to the Suffolk County Ethics Commission before, during the Steve Levy era. And, uh, there was a political firestorm that resulted in the creation of a new ethics entity, uh, which is a story that we don't need to go into here. But if there's any question that you have about the way it would work, given, i- if you ask the county, I represent two county ethics boards. I previously represented the Suffolk County Ethics Board. Ask away. I'd be happy to, uh, tell you whatever it is that you would like to know.
I, I guess, I, I'm not sure why, like, we want to, we want to get this through in a timely manner. I'm not sure.
But I don't want to rush it either.
Right.
It's A or B. Do you want the county, or do you want local?
I, I don't know if I want the county. I, it's the thing, is, and I think I want to, I don't know. I, 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 I have to put my questions together. I don't know what I would ask, but I would think that part of due diligence would be to check, to see what the county has to offer. Maybe you can-
Same exact thing.
Well, no, the count, the only thing the county would offer to you is, uh, receiving complaints and providing advice. That's all. They wouldn't do the ethics training. They wouldn't administer your financial disclosure program. Uh, but, um, so, uh, that, that's what, that's what they would do. And, um, they would do it in, you know, in a way similar to the way your own appointed board would do it. Uh, and, but, but it would be done by people who you didn't vet, who-
Right.
-you didn't select, who don't come from this village. Um, this is an opportunity to create something for this, this village, you know, that is, uh, to borrow a phrase, of the village, by the village, and for the village.
And you're dealing with the county Board of Ethics. I mean, they took ults, they, they-
Yep, yep.
And I don't want you to say anything, you know, that you shouldn't be, but respectable people that-
Yes, respectable people, also people with strong political allegiances.
All right.
And Stephen, would they, to, along with Bob's, along the line of Bob's questions, uh, which code do they enforce?
Uh, well, if they're acting as this village's Board of Ethics, they would have to look at this village's Code of Ethics.
And interpret it.
And interpret it, yeah.
And, and why is, um, po- political, so, because we are, we are of no parties? We are of no, you know-
Home Rule.
Sorry?
Home Rule.
No, I, I understand that, but it keeps-
The county board is appointed by the major, I'm sorry, the legislator's majority leader, and I think the county executive-
Two appointed by the county executive.
Two appointed by-
One appointed by the presiding officer of the Suffolk County Legislature, which is also the same, is it?
They're the same parties.
Same party.
They will be the same parties.
And then one appointed by the majority leader of the legislature. They're appointed for, and then one appointed by the minority leader of the legislature. And each is appointed for a four-year term. It does not disclose, there is one vacancy, does not disclose, um, the term, uh, ex- uh, expirations of each of these members who are listed on the website.
You've got county executives, so that's two appointed by one party. Presiding officer gets one, that's the same party. Majority leader, that's the same party. And one appointed by the minority, a different party.
In my view, that's a bad structure.
Yeah.
The reason it's a bad structure is because nobody should be appointed to the board thinking that they're there representing a particular constituency. You know, I'm-
And we have the ability to, because we, I'm sorry, I'll-
I'm not here on this board to do the will of the county executive, you know, or the m- majority leader.
You want them to be completely independent-
So, who, who are, so-
Of an, of an appoint, appointed persons.
I'm, I'm not saying that that allegiance to particular county leaders would filter down to this, to this, to their, to whatever they do on behalf of this board. But nevertheless, to me, still- But nevertheless, to me, still, and again, and I'm sorry to be repetitive, but the question is whether you wanna cede the power, the authority, to select the people who will s- serve this important function for the village, uh, and, uh, to, to a remote government board, uh, and not have, who are not populated by residents of this village. I just don't understand why you, why you would want that. Uh, I don't understand why any municipality would want that. You have the resources to have your own ethics program populated with people who you have confidence in. I, I just, you know, if you were some rural municipality, upstate New York, unable to put together a group of people to serve, I could understand, I could understand it. But in the village of Port Jefferson, rich with the resources of this village, where it's almost an embarrassment of riches in terms of talent and ability, why you would wanna go to the county, just, I, I just don't, don't understand. And again, maybe I'm saying too much, I'm not a member of this board. Maybe I should keep quiet now.
No, I appreciate your opinion, I appreciate you, you know, with your knowledge of, of the counties, well, the one county that you were representing.
Thank you.
I, I, and I thank you for that. I don't know, maybe we should get, you know, move on with, with this.
Agree.
I understand what you're saying as far as home rule, and that, that's a very...
I think it's the most important thing. You want the citizens of your, the citizens who elected the government to sit if they have to.
It's a very strong argument, it's, you know, the home rules, so. But why don't we move on with this, and then we can, because we're, we obviously...
I'm sorry if I got hot, I apologize. I apologize.
Apology accepted, true.
I didn't mean to accuse you of anything, I'm just, it, it's very, very frustrating to me to hear of things that happened, and they're documented, to think that nobody even thought that it was inappropriate.
And again, I've said many times, ad nauseam, this, I'm so behind the, the effort to bring and clarify ethics for this village, and, uh, so that's why I did...
I, I think we all took an oath, and we, we're all fighting for the same thing, it's just a matter of how we get there.
Yeah, and I could, could, I appreciate your comments, and I take with advisement, because you, you know, you've, you've had dealings with that, so...
Yep, and I, I just...
Unlike, you know, unlike myself, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Everybody brings their unique perspective.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I just like to always, always explore options before committing.
So, and, and just one more point on this topic is, in, in my experience, which is short, one year as a trustee, I had several questions related to ethics that ended up going to the village attorney for an opinion. Or you, you ta- the, the recommendation was, go to NICOM, but then the feedback from the village attorney is, you don't wanna go to NICOM because it's a little embarrassing, cause it's kind of revealing. And, and, under one circumstance, not every circumstance I'm not talking about, but... When you, when you, when you rely on your village attorney, who is not only doing land use and municipal, uh, law for the village, and representing the village in a meeting, and representing the village in, in amending zoning re- ordinances, regulations, um, and that person is the same person you're relying on for ethics governance, there's sort of, um, conflict of interest there.
He's also appointed.
I, I will say this.
And he's also appointed.
Yeah, I would say this, the village attorney is a good resource to go to as a first, first ask. You know, before you can convene, have time to convene the board of ethics. There's no problem at all, in my view, in consulting with the, with the village attorney, he is your attorney. Here's, here's the issue though, with village, the village attorney and ethics issues. I know of two cases in which the municipal attorney is given one set of advice, the board of ethics has disagreed, the matter is wound up before the court, and the courts have sided with the board of ethics. Courts give great weight to determinations made by the local board of ethics. So, in my view, the highest level of protection for village officers and employees is a written advisory opinion from the board of ethics. That is the highest level of protection. Even then, there's the potential that a court could disagree, but it's very much less likely. So... By the way, it's not necessary for you to hear me say this, but I respect the diligence that you brought to this, and the thoroughness of your review, and the conscientiousness of the questions that you're asking. I, I really do, I respect, I respect you, and I respect that.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you. I, it's, it's all in, uh, in the effort to make sure that this very important effort that's being made is thoroughly explored and, and done well, because I appreciate it being brought to the forefront, and, uh, you know, it, it will be executed, and, um, you know, I just, just wanna see it do well and, and serve this village as, as, uh, you know, perhaps it should have for a longer period of time prior, so I'm just looking forward.
And something you just said reminded me what's so important about this. And that is that, um, we have an opportunity to protect the village from anything that could cause, you know, harm risk, financial issues, um, related to, to ethics, and, uh...
You know, unethical conduct is a gr- is a, has a very high cost in many ways that can be seen, in many ways that can't be seen.
Loss of public trust is the most, I think, uh, the one that costs the most.
Yep. If you go around the world, the, uh, greater the level of corruption of the government, the worse the economy.
Sure.
And now, I, I certainly trust that we have no corruption in this village, and hopefully never will. Corruption is a very strong word. That's not really what we're talking about with the ethics program. We're really talking about helping people to know what the rules are, to avoid unintended violations, and to inspire public confidence, that's really what we're talking about. There's nothing this program can ever do to stop someone who's a criminal from engaging in criminal activity. That you can't prevent. And what we're primarily aimed at here is prevention, prevention of unintended ethics, ethics violations.
A place to ask a question.
Through education.
Through education, exactly. The most important part of the program is education.
I've gotta, I've gotta say something, uh... I just hope that this is not related to the past. I wanna move forward, I'm a little bit tired of hearing the term, the past administration. I'm unaware of these so-called ethical violations, I'd like to sit in a room and discuss them in maybe an executive session. I'd like to...
I can rattle them off right now?
I don't wanna hear them right now, because I have a number of them I could rattle off, and I don't think it should be rattled off here.
I have no...
I wanna move forward.
To your point, no desire to look back. My desire is to have people only know them or understand it, so that they don't do it in the future.
I, I would, I would look back only to this extent. This village's code of ethics was adopted in nineteen seventy. It was amended last, I think in nineteen seventy-four, to add a minor requirement to conform with Article eighteen of the general municipal law. An ethics code that's, uh, fif- half a century old, can't believe, that makes me pretty old. Warrants review, it warrants updating. You wanna have a modern code of ethics, you don't wanna have something that was drafted in the nineteen seventies. That's, I think that's really the bottom line here.
I have no, no problem with the code. A lot of questions in my mind were answered tonight. I do just have problems with some of the comments that were...
Okay. Okay, so just quickly, uh, the primary purpose of the board of ethics, as we said, is to render advisory opinions, to, uh, to provide ethics training. It administers the financial disclosure law, and it also is authorized to investigate complaints. Now, requests for advice are received only from people asked, from village officers and employees inquiring about themselves or someone they supervise, because ethics advice is, is a sh- is a shield, it's not a sword. But the board of ethics is also authorized to investigate complaints. And when, a- and in doing so, first it does triage. It determines whether this complaint sets forth facts, which if true, would be an ethics violation. Most don't. But those that do warrant investigation. It could be, it could start out with an informal, uh, uh, meeting with the complainant or even the respondent. If it works, it could involve an evidentiary hearing, at which the respondent is entitled to legal representation. A stenographer is, will take, take a transcript, uh, and ultimately determination would be made. This code authorizes the board of ethics to impose fines of up to ten thousand dollars for an ethics violation. And, uh, other remedies include recommendations to the board of trustees for discipline, where appropriate, referrals to the district attorney's office or other prosecutor, where appropriate, and, and other, other such, other such remedies. But I've never seen a board of eth- I think the highest fine that I've ever seen a board of ethics impose, uh, of those that I've represented, is five thousand dollars. And even that one was higher than what I suggested to them. So, the ten thousand dollars is for deterrence, it is for deterrent purposes. If someone is recalcitrant and not submitting their financial disclosure law, disclosure form, rather, it's very useful to be able to say to them, "Please file your delinquent form, and for your information, the board of ethics is authorized to impose penalties of up to ten thousand dollars for violations of the code."
And how is that enforced?
Uh, well, it would have to be enforced through, uh, through, uh, judicial, judicial action, if it came to it.
At the village level?
No, no, the, no, that, the village court would not have jurisdiction over that. The, um, uh, if the village, uh, board of ethics imposed a penalty, the village would seek a, a money judgment in either di- do you have district court out here, or...
Yes.
Okay, in district court. Presumably it would be below the district court jurisdiction. Uh, if it were, you know, in that unlikely case that it were a large amount, it would be in Supreme Court. And you'd get a judgment, and you'd enforce the judgment like any other civil creditor would. And by the way, that's the same thing that would happen if the village court imposed a fine. You'd ha- if, in order to enforce that fine, you'd have to go through that same process.
Unless they settle, or, or agree to pay the fine?
Oh yeah, that's, of course, that, that's true, ethics, in the ethics realm as well. Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Now, I, this, a com- a com- excuse me. A complaint coming from a resident, does that go directly to the ethics board?
It, it would, yes. Yes, the eth- the ethics board would have a, an email address, and, uh, and could receive correspondence here at village hall. The ethics board should have not only an attorney, but also a secretary appointed from the village staff to serve as the confidential secretary of the, of the board.
Would that be a paid position, or...
Uh, well, I'm, you know, if there are extra duties assigned to this person, you might wanna consider supplementing their, their salary. But it's not heavy lifting. It's, it's sending out meeting notices, it's being the recipient of ethics, uh, correspondence and...
Similar to the, uh, planning board or zoning board secretary?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Who, who receives a stipend for...
Right, right. And, um, by the way, uh, when I said that advisory opinions go only to officers and employees of the village inquiring about themselves or someone they supervise, complaints can be filed by anybody. I believe, you know, others disagree, but I believe in also accepting anonymous complaints. And because the motives of the complainant are irrelevant, the question should be, is there an ethics violation? And if there is, regardless of who the complainant is, the board of ethics, in my view, has a duty to investigate. So, um, the, the risk that an anonymous complainant runs is that if they haven't provided enough information, the board has no one to go to to ask for further information.
Similar to our court officers, receive anonymous complaints.
Right, right.
So, follow up in, in a very similar way.
There are some municipalities, none of the ones that I represent, but some municipalities want complaints to be sworn by the complainant, I think that's crazy. I think, uh, you wanna know, you wanna collect as much information as possible.
That was actually one of my questions, cause one of the other villagers that I investigated did say the head to head, submit a sworn statement.
See, to me, that's chilling, that's chilling to the, to the complaints, to the complainants. That's gonna reduce the number of people who are willing to make the complaint. And that's not what you want.
All right, so let me ask you a question of forty five, uh...
Yeah, go ahead.
So forty-three, uh, forty-one, twenty-three C. The political parties, is that, in a village like this, you're not running on political par- although you could, but you're not running on political parties, um...
In my, look, that's also something that's entirely discretionary with this board. The board can decide whether it wants to do that or not. To me, the, uh, the virtue of that is the appearance that it gives to the public. The public doesn't know that politics doesn't play as major a role in village government as it does in town government or county government. So, I think it's helpful in inspiring public confidence to have a code that says that the board must be bipartisan or multi-partisan in nature. And so that's why we have said here, that of the five-member board, no more than two members may belong to the same political party. So it could be two Rs, two, two Ds, a blank, or a member of a minor party, or any combination of, of the above, provided that, um, no more than two members belong to the same political party. Again, is that an essential provision? No. But I think it's helpful in creating the appearance and the image that you want to create.
I had a question before about, um, village residents, but I think you answered that the last, at the public hearing.
Right.
That, all, all the members of the board would be vill- are required to be village residents, correct?
Yes, that's required by state law, not just the board of ethics.
Wouldn't that put us back, similar to what the Suffolk County does, the political...
No, because you would be operating just on the basis of enrollment. You know? People are enrolled in a political party in order just to vote. That doesn't mean they're active participants in, in the polit- in politics.
So, and with other, I know this was brought up at, at the public hearing, you know, with the board, you're kinda looking at other qualifications or disqualifications for, uh, individuals to give a, a little bit more guidance than, I have a good gut feeling. You know, it's, uh...
But all you would be accomplishing by doing that is tying your own hands. You're the ones who are gonna make these appointments, so... So you will make the appointments as you deem appropriate. If you start to impose particular requirements, you're going to narrow the pool that you can draw from.
Sure.
And particularly if you decide to leave in the multi partisan provision, you already are limited in who you can consider for a particular seat.
I, I guess what came to mind for me was like, people who have business dealings with the village, you know, like, you know, these other factors that we look, we look at in other parts of the Ethics Code that, and, you know, circling around to Board of Ethics, are those factors that would potentially, you know, maybe not be a conflict of interest with, with a particular case, but sort of a...
All of those considerations are legitimate for you to consider when you are filling a vacancy. But you, as I said, by putting it into the code, all you will be doing is, is tying your own hands.
Taking away that opportunity. So if, if you, if there are five Is or blanks, there's no restriction from appointing five blanks?
Correct.
Yeah. It's only you can't, because there's no political affiliation there.
Right.
But you can't appoint five Is.
Right.
Well, you could appoint five blanks but not five Is, because blanks don't have an affiliation. Is is independent.
Is, independence party, right.
You just repeated what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm proud.
Exactly, exactly. But the reason I asked about Is, is Is are technically independent.
No.
But there is an independent party with independent candidate, as there is a Green. So there could be a Green, there could be an I, there could be an R, there can be...
Independent party. Independence party.
If, if, if one would be, if one wished to be cynical, one might conclude that the reason that party is named the Independence Party is so that people would think that they were unaffiliated and would join it. But that is not the case.
The New York Post used to write an annual article about that. They called those party members who thought they were blacks.
Right.
They said, "I'm independent," not realizing they were in a party.
Do you know where that party comes from? Ross Perot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you remember him?
Yes.
Of course.
Do you remember his vice presidential?
His, his name is invoked very often now.
Yep.
Okay.
Should there be somewhere in there about removal of members?
The, the, the law also already has a mechanism for that. I think that, I, you see, the, the other consideration here is you want the Board of Ethics to have a degree of independence. That's why they have fixed staggered terms, so that the appointing authority can't wipe out a board that they're unhappy with. And to the extent that you put in a provision on removal, you're kind of like undermining that appearance of independence.
Okay.
In our code, which may be state also, the Planning Board, the Learning Board of Appeals, their appointments are their appointments. There is no ability for, unless there's, I guess, I don't know, maybe some egregious issue or, but that, a new administration comes in and there's no change of the, of the independence without resignations.
No, but I did see that in other, in other villages, they, they had a, you know, removal and, and, you know, the steps that you would have to go through if you wanted, if you wanted to remove a member.
In the Sedaka case, coming from Nassau County where the Mangano administration first came in, the county executive tried to wipe out the, it was either the, I think it was the Board of Assessment Review, and replace its members, went all the way up to the Court of Appeals. And when someone is, is serving a, a finite term, a fixed term, they're not serving at the pleasure of the appointing authority. It's not like employment at will. So, okay. So, let's see. Getting a little bit late, so maybe we should look at the Ethics Training, the, the, the code provides for Ethics Training. In some municipalities, yeah, here it is. Each village officer and employee shall receive ethics training in such form as determined by the Board of Ethics within six months of the effective date of this chapter. Thereafter, all persons required to file annual statements of financial disclosure pursuant to this chapter shall receive ethics training biennially, and all other village officers and employees shall receive ethics training at least every four years. I originally drafted these codes requiring everyone to be trained every two years, but that can be burdensome to a village with large staff. So the people in the more responsible positions, sufficiently responsible if they're required to file financial disclosure statements, they get trained every two years. Everybody else, the guy who mows the lawn in the park and so forth, gets trained every four years.
I, I had some, some questions that we kind of skipped past the areas.
Sure.
I understand it's getting late, but this, as we've all agreed, it's very important.
Yep.
So, this section, Investigations, so B, I guess we're forty one twenty four, B, um, no, sorry, C. No, yep, B, eight.
Okay.
I don't, B, eight. Like, we're playing bingo now. So, there's nothing in this section, so, you know, it's talking about the Board of Ethics conducting an investigation of itself where only members of its staff receives a complaint, has violated provisions, any other law. The Board of Ethics shall promptly transmit, the village, transmit to the Board of Trustees a copy of the complaint, and then what?
Well, then it's up to you to decide.
Then we become the Board of Ethics?
I, I would, I would expect so. But that would, you know, you are the governing body of this village. So if you received an ethics complaint about a member of the Board of Ethics, you would decide whether you wanted to, how you wanted to handle it. Whether you wanted to seek the assistance of the County Board of Ethics. That would be an instance in which perhaps I might think that that would be an appropriate thing to do. Or you could conduct a hearing and investigation yourself.
Is that something that we want to clarify again? Because I, I look at this like a roadmap. And so, just in, just understanding the and then.
Yeah, but I, you know, again, this is, this is you. This is you. They're, they're forwarding it to you so that you can decide what to do with it. I don't think you need to tell yourself, and of course I'm saying you and yourself, but I mean, I don't think the governing body of this village needs to tell itself what to do when it receives a complaint.
We would just seek advice from...
I think you, you would seek the advice of the village attorney, you, you know, or, or me if appropriate, or other, or outside sources. You also have the authority to seek independent advice if you wish to do it. You know, you could appoint special counsel. You could do whatever it is that you felt appropriate.
And then the, the next question was the civil fine. Just seems, just seems like a lot, like, like when would someone be fined ten thousand dollars by, by the Board?
Hopefully never. But...
I've never heard of it.
Yeah.
Right. So, so I, so then is it a sort of silly number to...
Well, it's to, as he explained before, it's to create a, to dissuade people from even wanting to broach violating the code.
I'll tell you, the, the place where you really get people who are like wise guys is in the area of financial disclosure. Somebody, everybody hates it. Everybody resents it. And sometimes you get people who just like make you chase them and, and, or file forms that, you know, are just obviously inadequate, you know, and do it again and again. It's nice to be able to give the people, somebody like that, a little, a bucket of cold water in the face.
I guess for me, like, two or five thousand dollars would be that bucket of cold water, but I suppose it's relative means.
So there's a, we can pose that limit, right?
Also, you know, there, this is a, you know, the demographics of this village are diverse. There are some very wealthy people in this village for whom ten thousand dollars is not quite as shocking a number as it is for others.
Sure, sure. All right.
And if the, let's say extremes, a ten thousand dollar fee is, or fine is imposed, is there a way for them to appeal it? I mean...
Yeah, oh, yes, I will ask that in one second. I just want to add one more thought. What if an ethics violation has cost the village a large amount of money?
Then I, I would hope that it would go to, you know, be referred to one of these higher courts if it was a...
Well, but if, if there's a crime, yes. If there's some right of action, yes. But if it's an ethics violation that has resulted in a significant loss to the village, that might be a circum... Look, I'm trying to use my imagination. Again, I've never, in all my experience, and believe me, I have many years of experience in this field, encountered a fine higher than five thousand dollars. And don't expect I ever will. Hope I never do. But it, it's useful in that regard. I'm sorry, your question again?
If, if a ten thousand dollar fine is imposed, do they, is there a way for the, do they appeal it? How, and how does that appeal process work?
Anything the Board of Ethics does, with the exception of advice, which is not a final determination subject to judicial review, but any determinations made by the Board of Ethics, like the determinations made by any village board, are subject to judicial review in an Article seventy eight proceeding. And if they're arbitrary, if they're capricious, if they're an abuse of discretion, if they're not supported by the evidence in the record, they will be reversed by the, by the court.
By the proper court. So it doesn't, it doesn't come to the Board, it goes to the court?
Right, right.
Okay. Can I go on?
Yes, please, please.
On the financial interest, uh, let's see, three B?
Oh, you're on the disclosure form now, okay.
Yeah, I'm on the, yes, disclosure form.
Three B.
It says, indicate whether such activity is regulated by any state or local agency with the bottom of...
Right.
What does that mean?
Well, for example, my outside employment, if I had a position in this village, would be as an attorney, and that's regulated by the Office of Court Administration. Some people are, you know, school teachers, regulated by the Board of Education.
Okay. Then on the same thing, E for Investments. Now, how intense does that get as far as, I mean, are you, is the person putting down deferred comp, you know, and the amount that they have in certain pension plans or things like that? Or is, I got a little confused as far as...
Yeah. Well, F, which is addressed to trusts, says do not list IRS eligible retirement plans or interests in estate or trust, et cetera. Investments are more of your ownership of, of a business, debt, equity, stocks, bonds, collateral, other investments. We indicate that investments in publicly traded securities that are held in a brokerage firm can be identified by identifying the brokerage firm, not by identifying each individual security owned.
So that does include 401K, Roth IRAs, SEPS?
Well, not if they fall within...
The, the retirement stuff.
Yeah.
Well, but they're not in a trust.
Well, well, it says identify each interest in a trust or estate or similar beneficial interest. Do not list IRS eligible retirement plans or interests in an estate or trust.
Right, but, but that says do not list IRS eligible retirement plans or interests in a, and I take that as which are in an estate or trust created by a...
No, no.
Separate, right?
Yeah. Do not list IRS eligible retirement plans or interests in an estate or trust created by or for a spouse, child, stepchild, et cetera.
So is there a way, since trustee Giuliano and I had had, you know, I'm guessing we have similar notes on, on our pages over there, is it possible to, to add some clarifying, you know, so, so if that, if that's the case there, so if it really is meant to say that on this form, one would not list IRS eligible retirement plans, you know, comma, nor, nor shall you list interests to make sure that, that's, that's separate. And then in Investments, again, having, having that clarity as to whether or not one has to list their...
Right. Well, first of all, what I would suggest is that under F, after the word trusts in the title, I say trusts and beneficial interests. I think that'll add a little bit of clarity by itself. And, you know, if somebody lists a, we don't really care about disclosures that are made but weren't required. We care about disclosures that were required but weren't made. So, you know, if somebody lists a retirement account but weren't required to do so, no harm, no foul.
I guess I'm trying to figure out how to make people hate these less. You know, like, you, you know, you acknowledge that, that nobody likes these. And so I, and I completely understand and support the, the intention of them and the necessity of them. But the, you know, again, just making sure that everybody's doing the same thing so that you don't have someone, like, I always err on the side of, you know, worrying and caution, so I don't want to submit something and then have it come back and say, well, you violated this because you didn't list your, you know, your Roth IRAs on here, or, you know, whatever it is. So just making sure, you know, again, I'm, I'm always seeking clarity when codifying something.
What does it mean by category of, of amount?
If you look at the first page...
You're not asked to put in specific amounts, you're asked to put in ranges.
Right, you're not asked to list the dollar amount.
Oh, I see, I see, yep. Okay.
I mean, look, you have complete discretion when it comes to this form. If you wanted, say, to not list retirement accounts, to not list IRAs, you can exclude that, that, those things. You're not required by law to, to have this form at all, so you can design it as, as you wish. I will just give you a little background on this. I may have told you this before, but when financial disclosure law was first enacted, there was, it, the statute itself incorporated a horrible, difficult, dense form that, you know, was just very difficult. And the town of Chautauqua, I always have to think about whether it's Chautauqua or Chappaqua, but it was Chautauqua.
Still up there.
Asked the Temporary State Commission to review an alternate form, a kinder, gentler form that they had designed and, and opined whether it met the minimum requirements of the law. And they did, and they tweaked it a little bit, and they said, as we've tweaked it, it would meet the minimum requirements of the state law. And this form is not identical to, but it's based upon that form approved by the Temporary State Commission. So a- a- as I said, well, when you stepped away, you have absolute discretion to include or exclude from this form because of the population of this village. because of the population of this village.
Oh, we as a board right now?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I was like, no, 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 that's what we're trying to avoid.
No, in, in putting this together.
Right, right, right. So if the board wants to say, do not list retirement, you know, Roth IRAs, do not, uh, list, um, deferred comp, we can do that. It's, it's a matter of whether the board regards that as a simplification of the form, or, uh, you know, or more complication, or good or bad. I mean, there are judgments to make.
Does this mirror the state form? It seems awfully familiar.
It doesn't mirror the form that's in the, the general municipal law.
Mm-hmm.
It mirrors fairly closely the, uh, sort of gentler form that the temporary state commission approved.
I, I recall something very similar when I was working for the Senate.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, if, if the, the spirit of it as a village level is, is to, um, I guess, I believe, the attorney said before, help people see potential conflicts of interest.
Yes.
So again, we're looking to avoid violations. So it says, oh, you know, if you have, you know, this or past employment, you're listing it not so that people can throw it back in your face, but to say, oh, interesting, I didn't think of it that way. Um, I guess I, I would want to be sure that everything that is helpful is included, and then, you know, things that, uh, again, so we're asking our employees to, you know...
As I said earlier, I don't care how wealthy you are. That's not my business, and, uh, a conflict of interest can be ten dollars or it could be ten thousand dollars.
Right.
It's still a conflict of interest. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, bank accounts, you know, we can, we can even exclude banks at, uh, at, um, or accounts at, um, uh, banks, uh, well, I mean, we have to be careful because there are, there are accounts and then there are accounts. Uh, savings accounts, checking accounts, um... But of course, we want to be careful about unintended consequences to what we exclude. That's why, that's why I'm being cautious.
In your experience with other villages, has this form ever stopped people from saying, oh, I'm not, I don't want to volunteer for that village? I, they're...
No.
They're, they're looking too much into my financials.
The first year that you roll it out, there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of, uh, problems. After the first year, it becomes routine.
That goes along with the education, right?
I could tell you anecdotally, I've heard of boards that I've been on that people have been offered to participate who've declined because they don't want to do the financials.
When the financial disclosure law was enacted by the state in nineteen eighty-seven, I was a member of the Nassau County Board of Ethics, and when the county attorney came in to explain the law to us, the Board of Ethics member sitting to my left resigned, never saw him again. Okay, so, um, what's the verdict on Roth IRAs and deferred comp, uh...
So, deferred compensation is, for example, at Stony Brook, the university president had a state salary, and then what was called deferred compensation from the Stony Brook Foundation. It was an additional enticement of salary that wasn't considered, uh, funding from the state. So in reporting to, um, income to Chronicle of Higher Education, um, the paper kind of record for higher education, uh, those disclosures were, you know, required at the consequence of exposure if you don't disclose at all, and so then they can do their reporting. And so this is just an example of deferred compensation.
Right, but in the village, if you're in a village employee, you can't have a 401K, you have a deferred comp, which is the same thing as a 401K, but it's, they, they call it deferred... Yeah, but it's called deferred comp.
And so that is part of your benefits package?
It's like a 401K, yeah.
So...
So that would be a village-sponsored deferred comp?
It's through the state, yeah.
Of state.
Yeah.
Well, would that be, is that included under IRS eligible retirement plans?
Yes. Not required, right?
Yep.
Well, and that, that's what, that's a question we're asking, because then Roths fall under there, SEPS fall under there, right?
Right.
401K, so that, that phrasing might just take, you know, if we...
I, the last form I filled out was on, when I was on the LIPA board, and I don't think I had to report IR, IRAs in retirement.
Right, it says do not list IRS eligible retirement plans or...
And theirs is online, you just check off boxes.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
You can maybe get there one day, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 'cause then there's not all the papers.
But again, since this is with the village, we're asking, you know, village employees who do this, maybe we should, should we include 40, what is it? What is it, your 40...
Three B?
Three B.
Yes.
Well, wouldn't that be an IRS eligible retirement plan?
It's actually different. I mean, it's, it is, but...
I can say 403B or other IRS eligible...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd do it at the college, too.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Can contribute more than you...
Mm-hmm.
And under that, you could even go draw off a regular.
And so are, are we adding some clarifying language to, to both E and F?
No, just F, what, on F, we can say trusts and, and beneficial interests as a title.
Right.
And then in the text, we can say do not list, you know, I'll get the lang- I'll go find the technical name for it, 403B or other IRS eligible retirement plans.
Okay, I just, I know this sounds pedantic and I know it's very late, but, uh, the, again, I read that sentence as IRS eligible retirement plans or interests in a esti- in an estate or trust created for a spouse. So I, I know, I believe what you said was it's intended to be retirement plans or interests in an estate.
I'll put a comma after the word plans.
That's greatly satisfactory, thank you.
Punctuation marks are the best.
Well, listen, I, I don't have to tell you as an attorney, they, they met.
Yes, I agree.
And then, uh, alright, so then that, is that clarifying enough to show that, that investments does not include IRS eligible retirement plans?
I, I think so.
Um, oh, uh, in the categorical, um, you know, I, I, it's, I think it's a good idea to have the categories as opposed to having to put the, the clear amount. Um, but if you, for instance, I'm a small business owner, and my gross is much different than my net, what are we, what is the reporting?
Well, you're not going to be reporting the income earned by your employer or your, or a business that you own. You're going to be reporting your income.
So it's, it's the tax returns at the end of the year?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's what I, again, just clarifying.
By the way, this will also come with a set of instructions. We can, if, if, this form is not easy to change because it requires, uh, an amendment to the, the law, but a set of instructions can be changed very easily, so...
So it's like a policy attached to the codified form?
Right.
Or a set of instructions.
Right, right.
Um, I do, I do see a benefit to planning to have this, um, as an electronic, uh, process versus a process on paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, um, got, uh, I persuaded the county of Nassau to, to, to do that, and I've now persuaded Westchester County to do it. Westchester County entered into an intermunicipal agreement with Nassau so that they wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the virtues of electronic filing is, um, the most frequent administrative burden with these things is that people skip questions. They go through it so quickly that they miss, they miss questions. And if you're doing it electronically, it will not allow you to go to question number three until you've answered question number two.
Yep, good point, yeah.
So that's one thing. Also, you can determine who hasn't, who has not filed by a couple keystrokes. The other thing is, if you have an electronic list of county, uh, of village vendors, and you want to match them to the outside employers and outside investments listed on the form, that makes such, if, if the program is designed in the right, so as to allow that, you can just compare fields.
Mm-hmm.
Um, of course, the words have to be exactly the same, which might not be the case, but, um... So there, but yes, electronic filing is definitely the way to go, but at the same time, it's important to either allow people also to file a hard copy if they're not tech savvy, or to come into Village Hall and have somebody in the clerk's office assist them in filing it electronically.
Okay.
Until two thousand nine, the city of New York had, uh, did not have electronic filing.
Terrific.
Imagine the number of disclosure forms filed with the city of New York annually. In two thousand nine, they spent, of what I'm told is a fortune, to develop the software and the program necessary to convert to electronic filing.
Is it the secretary to the board that accumulates all this and maintains it?
In the Board of, here?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, the, the secretary to the board would have custody of the forms. Uh, in most of the villages that I represent, I review the forms and prepare a report to the Board of Ethics, but the secretary is the one who compiles the list of who has and who has not filed. I just review them for potential conflicts. And I do that by doing, when I review the forms, I, first I determine whether all questions have been answered. Then, uh, I determine what, I try to get a list of vendors and compare them to investments and outside employers where it seems to be warranted. Uh, and finally, you just eyeball it to see if anything kind of jumps off the page and suggests that there might be a problem. Usually it doesn't, but sometimes you see something that warrants a follow-up question. And the fact that somebody works for a village vendor, uh, or owns a company that is a village vendor, doesn't necessarily mean that there's a conflict of interest, but it just might trigger a follow-up inquiry.
Mm-hmm.
Where is, um, I'm having trouble finding this section on the, um...
I should move forward.
I'm just thinking, Sam.
Yeah, um, uh, oh my God, the word, it is late. Uh, um, the Ethics Board is sworn to, uh, not secrecy.
Oh, yeah, confidentiality.
Yeah, thank you. We're playing, now we're playing buzzwords, okay.
Yeah, that's in there.
Well, I think where, I think where that is, is that they're, they grant, they issue advisory opinions only to village officers and employees inquiring about themselves or someone they supervise.
And then is there confidentiality with, uh, the, the rest of their process?
Uh...
So they're, you know, they're handling forms and, you know, obviously, getting back to FOIL, you know, there's, uh...
Complaints will, shall be afforded, this might go to it, but we're looking at four under the bingo game, alright, forty one twenty-four. Um, so, the, what?
Yeah, about the whistleblower protection.
Complaints shall be afforded such whistleblower protections as may be provided by Roth, to the extent possible.
So that's protecting anonymous complaints?
Shall be confidential, so number seven. All documents and hearings related to the investigation and hearing of any alleged violation of this chapter may be applicable, any applicable state and local laws relating to conflicts of interest in municipal ethics and training, but not limited to Article eighteen of general municipal law and all related rules, regulations, policies, proceeds, village fiduciaries, and shall be confidential and not available for public inspection or open to the public except as otherwise required by this chapter or by Freedom of Information law.
Or the Public Officers' Law.
Um, unless a...
Or the, I mean, Open Meetings' Law, yeah.
Unless a violation is found, is the last, the last line.
Yes.
And then in that case, are all of the aforementioned, uh, all the aforementioned information is made public, or is it sort of a, uh...
Well, it, it, I can imagine a set of circumstances where, for example, whistleblower protections might mandate not disclosing the identity of the complaint, maybe, maybe. Um, uh, there might be information which would result in unwarranted evasion of personal privacy. There might, might be any of those categories of information that the village is permitted to withhold from public, uh, public review. But basically, if someone is found to be in violation, uh, now that I'm thinking about it, the entire record that supports that finding is going to be available to that person, is going to be potentially a record that's submitted to the court in an Article seventy-eight proceeding, maybe forwarded to the Board of Trustees for consideration of disciplinary action or something of that nature. So, yeah, if, if a violation is found, the likelihood is that the entire record is going to be disclosed.
Okay. Okay.
And when the board meets, that's an open meeting?
Well, the board convenes in open, in public session and adjourns to executive session to discuss...
Just this weekend, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Because if a violation is not found, then it's not, you know, they're not...
Right. The majority of the business of the Board of Ethics is conducted in executive session, but not all of it. You know, discussing when ethics training is going to take place, uh, when the disclosure forms are going to be sent out, that sort of thing, is, uh, approving the minutes, those sorts of things take place in public. But then the, uh, complaints and requests for advice are in executive session.
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I mean, uh, so, thank you for your, um, what's the word? Intrepid diligence and the work that you did to put together your questions. Very detailed, significant, thank you.
I appreciate everyone's patience and staying here. I, I think I have, probably I have all of you physically don't want to be here the most 'cause I'm not feeling very well, but...
It didn't, it didn't require patience on, on my part. Um, but, uh, you thought of things that I didn't necessarily think about, so I appreciate that. But it also led me to a conclusion on some of those things that I'm, that I feel even more comfortable about. And, um, anybody else?
So the board is meeting on Monday.
Monday.
Uh, I am going to get a revised, uh, version to you prior to Monday. I guess I'll send it to Sylvia and she'll circulate it. And, um, I'll send a red line and a clean copy so you can see the changes. There's a likelihood that I will, I may not be able to be here on Monday because I'm starting a trial, and depending upon what time I get out, I may or may not get here in time for your meeting. What time is the meeting?
Uh, public six o'clock.
Six, yeah. The other option, of course, is that I will be on call. You know, if you need me, uh, by all means, uh, reach out to me. Since I'm not a member... Since I'm not a member of the board, I can participate remotely. So that's if I can't get here.
Okay. Do I have another question? Hmm, no.
I don't have anything. I don't know if you have any questions?
She did all my homework.
All right, so, um, any other further?
Nope.
Okay, so hearing no further comments or questions, um, do we...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think the motion to open, but we did, we did have a quorum.
We had a quorum, yeah.
So...
I'm sorry, we have to do it all over again.
Yeah.
Just play the video.
Clear?
Yeah.
Yeah.